Right on time.
Yeah.
Were you already here?
I've just been sneaking in.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, his laptop's here.
All right, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, meeting with the Planning Commission. It all rise for the public hearings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Stapp?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame noted she had a work obligation this evening. Commissioner Arnsman?
Here.
And Commissioner Woods?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of the agenda.
Chair Kempner? A motion to excuse Commissioner Hamame.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Hamame.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She is excused. Now, approval of the agenda. Anyone?
Motion to approve the agenda for May 28th, 2024.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of April 10th, 2024. Any changes, corrections, motions?
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. And the minutes of April 23rd, 2024. Any changes or motions?
Motion to approve. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of April 23rd are approved. Communications.
The only thing this evening not related to the public hearing is the copy of Citizen Planner.
And now citizens comments. This is the time for items that are not on the agenda. Any comments? We ask you to come to the podium, state your name. If you don't want us to botch your name in the minutes, sign in so that we can properly write them down. You'll have three minutes and the Planning Commission will not engage you, but we'll be noting your concerns or comments and address them or have a staff member reach out to you. Does anybody have any comments for items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on to the Plan Unit Development, PUD 0123, the Columbia. Kristin, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll just say a few brief comments and then we have Michelle Maron here from Carlisle Wardman, who did the review to provide some additional commentary. And the applicant has a presentation as well. You'll notice outlined in my staff report that I did note that this is a plan that you all needed to see because there were significant revisions, but it is very similar, obviously, to a plan that you saw back in October. At that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval. It was also a PUD and identified three of the seven benefits, which is the requirement for PUDs. And I included that previous motion in your staff report for reference. The three benefits that were identified, there have not been significant changes to those particular items, although I will note that the open space is slightly altered because of the addition of a parking space in that area. Other than that, there have not been significant changes. I will briefly go over the changes that are the things that are different from the previous plan iteration. The biggest and most obvious one is the removal of the bridge that previously spanned Columbia. So that is no longer proposed. You'll notice that fourth floor dwelling units have been added and the top floor patio decks that were previously along Coolidge have been removed. The roof line, therefore, has been altered as well to accommodate those fourth floor units. I previously mentioned the parking space added to the northeast corner of the south property that used some of that pocket park space. And then compact car spaces beyond the allotted 30% are proposed. There are some other minor changes, but those are really the most significant changes from the previous iteration. The applicant is still asking for the residential use on the first floor. Our ordinance currently requires non-residential use on that first floor in this district. I just wanted to note that that would be the draft. Future ordinance probably will contemplate residential uses on the first floor in this district. That was a question that was previously asked. The other significant deviation that remains pretty close to the same is the parking space. So the parking space ratio falls in just a little bit more than 1.4 units or spaces per unit. That is similar to the previous ask as well. And we are changing the multiple-family parking space standard, although that has not been put in the draft in official form yet, but it will be different when we get to the new ordinance. If you have any other questions on the process, excuse me, I'd be happy to go through those with you, but I am going to let Michelle go through her review in detail.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to go through some of the more finer detailed changes that happened between the last iteration of this plan that you saw and this one. In addition to those five major changes, there's some tiny ones here and there. Since the plan has now become two separate buildings, the vehicle access to the north parking lot will go from Columbia and Cambridge Roads, two-way access, and the south parking lot will be a one egress in. However, there is a secondary entry point to accommodate four parking spaces that are on the eastern side. So basically before, the way the parking was arranged, you accessed all the parking from entering the actual underneath the building itself. But now on the southern building, there's one uncovered space that was formerly in the pocket park area that is accessed from a separate drive and three additional spaces are also accessed from that little point. So you can see them all scrunched up on the plan there that I'm sure we'll see in a moment and you can also see in the plan before you. To accommodate the parking spaces, which have not changed that much, as Kristin said, the applicant is asking for an increase in the allotted amount of compact spaces. So if there is to be more than 30% of spaces that are compact, it requires a deviation issued by the Planning Commission. And right now, overall, across both buildings, it's 47.5 of all spaces that are compact and that includes 65.4% of all the south building parking spaces. That includes the tandem spaces and that just means that they are below the required 20 by eight-foot dimension and they can be as short as 16 feet and as narrow as eight. The applicant did clarify that the tandem spaces, which are in the southern building, will be only assigned to units where there are multiple drivers. And just like all the other spaces, they will be assigned. However, the plan does indicate that four of those parking spaces will be designated for guests, which should be considered when you're thinking about how many parking spaces are available for people that are living in the units. The pocket park has changed slightly and I think the applicant could probably provide some clarity on how it's impacted on the southern end because it does look, if you compare it to the previous plan that was approved or recommended for approval in October, that the southern part of the pocket park is larger to accommodate that new parking space within that northeast corner of the parcel for the south building. There's still a bunch of trees, a bunch of shrubs planted around the area. There haven't been any major changes there. Since there are two separate buildings, there's not a bridge connecting. There are now two separate waste rooms. And there's two trash chutes in the north building, but only one trash chute in the south building, even though there's recycling and trash in both of those rooms. So the applicant has indicated that the residents in the south building will walk their recycling down because there's only going to be a chute for the trash. The applicant also indicated that there are trash receptacles, benches and bicycle racks along Coolidge Highway that help to activate that street space there. There's a note that says there's nine bicycle racks provided, but only two are shown. Perhaps some clarity can be offered. Other changes. So the photometrics, the illumination is going to reach 0.0 foot candles, except for where the parking area entrance on Columbia. Columbia Road, Cambridge Road and the southern property line near the adjacent parking lot. So not along the adjacent residential shared property line. The applicant also provided some clarity on the number of units that are studios and one bedrooms to indicate possibly how many parking spaces might be needed for each unit. Because it's now four floors and there's no longer the roof, obviously, the massing has altered from the previous iteration. But just like before, there is still patterned broad screen that runs along much of the first floor parking area and you can see in that rendering there and some of the other elevations in the plan that there is some attriculation with the upper two floors on some of the elevations and transparency does exceed the required 40%. It's at 40.7 and 42% respectively for the two buildings. Those are the smaller changes that happened here. Just as before, the Planning Commission should go through the PUD recognizable benefits and consider whether or not they're being met with this plan. It did change slightly, so discussion should certainly be had. And then we recommend you go through the standard of approval one by one and discuss whether or not they are met. And just like Kristin said, if there's any questions, I can help.
Thank you.
Actually, yes. You saw me thinking. I do want to add just that when, as you're considering moving forward on the PUD, you want to make sure to make determinations on the four different deviations that would be required. And that is the front setbacks. And this is on the final page of our report. We summarized it there in the last bit there. The front setbacks, 10 feet is required and the north building is asking for two feet 1/8 inch. South building, seven feet 3 inches. And the balcony projections as well are going into that required area because the height has to be 10 feet. No, sorry, 8 feet in height is required. Or sorry, 8 feet in height is what they're proposing. 11 feet is what is required in the ordinance. So they're projecting a little too soon. And then, of course, the parking requirements and the compact parking spaces. So those are the four deviations or waivers that would be considered.
And the use on the first floor?
Yes, as part of the PUD, yeah.
And if I could note one thing, the Planning Commission is generally very good at this, but just a reminder that any motions for approval or denial should include specific findings and then any conditions that you want to include as well.
All right. You guys good?
Yes, and the applicant has a presentation.
Hi, welcome. Would you like to give us a presentation?
My pleasure, thank you. I think the best thing about tonight is we're the first and last agenda item. So hopefully we'll move along. Thank you for having us. We appreciate your time. Also, again, appreciate all your time and commitment to the city of Berkeley. You're all making a better place, so we appreciate that and thank you very kindly. We're excited to re-present the Columbia. As you know, we're back. We were here back in October. For anybody watching, if you want to check out the website, I'll give you the address. It's thecolumbiaberkeley.com. It's been up since October and there's a place there that answers a lot of frequently asked questions and can give you some specific details about the site, so about what we're proposing. With that, at a high level, I'd like to introduce the Columbia again. For everyone here, I think you've seen the presentation before. We're still 57 units being proposed. We're still proposing 80 parking spaces. The project itself is virtually the same with some exceptions that we made. It's a multi-family project. It's in the Gateway District. The units are going to range from 600 to 1,300 square feet. It optimizes the space along Coolidge. We think it beautifies the Gateway Corridor and it's replacing three 80-plus-year-old duplexes that are currently on the site with some old and aging landscaping. We've put a lot of time and planning into the design, the quality of the product, the materials we'll be using. We have those to share with you this evening. And we think that we've taken a lot of community input at the core of the project. We've taken a lot of input from various groups around the city and residents. The team is the same. I'm Wayne Wadika. I'm the president and CEO of a number of companies here in the area, but I'm the principal investor in WJ Ventures along with my family. Peter Stuhler is the Design House architect. He's not with us this evening, but Hunter and Taylor from Design House will be with us. Hunter will be co-presenting. Joe Anderson from Giffords Webster is here. He's been the engineer on the project throughout the time. And Wayne Wadika II, our intern, is back again this summer with us working on the project. So the reason we're here to revisit, I think is a very important point to be made. We could have gone to the council and pushed for a vote and presented based on your approval back in October. We listened to a lot of feedback following that meeting, frankly. We took a lot of input from not only planning professionals, residents, business people, council in our discussions and we thought we could make it a better project. So we, on our own design and our own cost and time delay, went back to the drawing board to design and build a better project that was more focused on being community-centered and what we feel ultimately becomes a better fit, even though we loved what we were presenting before. We think we're giving up some things, but we also think we are making a more attractive project overall and that it fits the design of the master plan better and will be a nice addition to the community. The feedback we got, basically people really did not like the bridge. That was the biggest objection we heard from the neighbors. We went back to the drawing board to see if we could build it by separating two buildings. We looked at the economics of that. We looked at the flow. We looked at the presentation of the property and we determined that we could do that. We could build two separate buildings. We went to work on softening the look with the roof line, the enhancements to the roof line. We added some windows to the project to soften, again, the mass feel of it. The building is only 34 feet from the street and then it tails back. That was a change before we had rooftop outdoor spaces, which we did eliminate. And so those were probably the two biggest things, where the rooftops and the bridge have been removed. What that did allow us to do was to add another level of residence where we were going to have two-story units. We now have one-story units. And so it's basically three floors of residential space as opposed to basically two and a half before. We still were able to maintain the number of units. It is more expensive to build two separate buildings, but we factored that into our consideration in relationship to the neighbors and to have a positive and ongoing good relationship with the community. The changes, as we discussed those changes, I came in and spoke with Kristin and the city attorney. Again, under our power, we came in and said, listen, we'd like to make some changes. What do we need to do? They suggested we come back for another PUD review. So we basically started over with the process. But I would say 99% of this project, so those two big issues are the same or have been enhanced considerably, taking into account traffic, vehicular traffic underneath the building. We caught something that wasn't caught in the first round. That was really constructive and there've been a number of really good enhancements and we're grateful we've actually taken the time to go back through this process. With that, we're going to co-present tonight, so I'd like to ask Hunter if he wouldn't mind stepping up to go through more of the specific overview of the updates.
Good afternoon. So as Wayne explained, we took a lot of the comments and concerns from the city council had with the project and after the Planning Commission previously approved us. And we went back to the drawing board and revised the building design to include the following updates. The biggest, of course, is the removal of the bridge. And in this, you can also see some of those included windows that Wayne mentioned about softening the massing of the building. And the next one is we modified the roof line because with the removal of the bridge, we had to go back and make sure we could still get those same amount of units, the 57 units. So modifying the roof line to add that fourth floor allowed us to keep the same amount of units with the removal of the bridge. On top of this, there's some also site enhancements, including the additional slope in the roof line, revising the parking circulation and the space sizing to comply with Chapter 138 of the Berkeley Mission and Code of Ordinances. There's several bench and trash receptacles along the Coolidge Highway sidewalk. All the mechanical units, originally they were placed up on that roof, kind of those outdoor patio spaces. They've been moved on top of the roof, to the center of the roof to keep out of any sight lines from the public. And the elevations updated to include additional windows in the stairwells and the Columbia-facing facades to, again, soften that massing and bring natural light and heat into the building.
All right, so some project overview items to cover with you. Thank you, Hunter. We think it's going to be, we know it'll be a high-quality product here in Berkeley. It's going to be a beautiful building. We put a lot of time into the look, the feel. We've not started the interior design work yet. We want to get through this process, but we know there'll be very functional units and will attract a good clientele to the building. As you know, we're very involved in the community, have been for 34 years, doing business here operationally and in real estate. So we understand the community, both Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Berkeley. We've been very active investors throughout the area. We know that this optimizes the existing space. These parcels, the city plan calls for multi-family, calls for building a new type of product in the city. It's a very difficult city to build in, to do multi-family because of typically the depths of the property. The hardship is the depth of the lots on Coolidge, right in the Gateway District, where you're calling for multi-family, you only have up to about 95 feet of depth. So in order to build something, you have to go wide, which we have done. So we believe that by owning both sides of the road and then the next block and the block across the street, we were used to working here, but we needed to go wide and we had to assemble a lot of property to do so over the years and we've done that. So we know that a project like this will look a lot better and have a much better community feel and contribution than three duplexes that are aging in that area. And the landscaping, you know, there's not real clear landscaping requirements called for. We are exceeding what's there. We're adding about 390 to 400 pieces of plant material. Joe will go through that in far more detail with you in just a bit and we'll show you those plans here shortly. Berkeley is not, it's not, this is a typical problem. Communities like Berkeley are looking for high-quality, multi-family properties and they're hard to develop in today's environment in a small community like this with not a lot of land available. Currently, 73% of the property in Berkeley is made up of single-family homes. Well, only 1% of the property today is multi-family. There's about 6.6% of the developable property available in the city. I'll go to that in here shortly. But in order to get multi-family and achieve some of the goals of the master plan, it's going to take projects like ours that can come along and figure out how to make it work, right? Not having retail on the first floor. If we had retail on the first floor, this project wouldn't be a non-starter. We don't think it requires, we don't want retail. There's a lot of available retail in the corridor, but it solves the parking problem by going up and parking underneath. It also eliminates large parking lots, high pole lights. So we've taken a lot of things into account to make the site work and it really hasn't been difficult. We just have had to be very thoughtful about doing it and we think we're coming away with a beautiful project that fits the master plan that was adopted in mid-'21 and addresses the needs for this type of housing in the area. The master plan and future land plan focus on a vibrant business community and we think this project helps that. It contributes. When we bring 57 new residents into the area, it will certainly have an impact on the business community for all the services in the area. The plan calls for alternative housing, which we currently, this does provide. It creates a walkable gateway in the corridor. We're right in the middle of the Gateway Corridor. We think what you'll see on the site plan and the enhancements we've made with benches, trash receptacles, maintaining trees in the right-of-way really create a walkable, high-quality-looking project that supports the local business community. The design elements are beautiful. We've got the design features here. We softened the look up. We feel like we've got what will be a beautiful project and really put Berkeley on the map. With 1,656 available acres in Berkeley, only 6.6 acres today are vacant and available for development and that's scattered throughout the city. So in order to build a project, you have to assemble and that's obviously what we've done over the years. Now, we think we fit within the master plan quite nicely and have creatively put together a project to present to you that we can feel confident in. Now, who's going to live at the Columbia? The rental rates are going to be aligned with today's market rate. It's not going to be, it'll be at market rate. It's intended to attract a mix of tenants, including single people, young professionals, people transitioning to or from homeownership. There's a high demand for people, we've learned this in our marketing and analysis, that want to stay in the area but don't want to own a home. But they want a high-quality place to live, whether they're seasonal, to be near family at certain times of the year or if they just want to downsize and have a more carefree lifestyle. There's a big demand for that from Berkeley residents that we're hearing from. And again, it allows you to downsize and stay in here. We're also hearing that from Huntington Woods. We have a lot of residents in Huntington Woods that don't want to own a home, have been lifelong residents, want to stay near their families, but they travel through much of the year. We think will attract that type of resident also that may be here just through the summer months and may travel. And we think there's definitely a pent-up demand for that type of product in the area for people that want to stay, want to have a nice place, but don't want to bond to a home, let's say a family here. So we think it fills that need as well. And we don't feel that. We did market analysis to show that there's a demand there. Throughout the process, we've engaged the community. We've gone, I personally have gone door-to-door to all the neighbors. I've offered to get their feedback. I've had people in my office. We've gone through the site plan with people. We've prioritized meeting with the adjacent neighbors. Two of the three neighbors on both sides are very much in favor of the project. In fact, both wrote letters of support that you have from your prior packets. And we've offered all three a landscaping credit to help buffer the project on their side of the property to add to what the landscaping we're putting in. So we're there and we're open to all three of the neighbors for that, for specific plans with them. We've put a budget together to help them soften the look from their house to the back of the project. We've received unanimous support from the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority in their meeting when we presented it. We presented it to the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce. We've had numerous letters of support from residents, businesses. Those are all in the prior packets. I'm not sure if they've reforted those with this package or not, but there's been tremendous support from residents. And so we feel like we've addressed all the concerns we possibly can and accommodated all the concerns the best way possible to build, again, a project that, one, can get built, but two, fit in nicely to the community with support. So the PUD approval recap, as you know, October 24th of last year, we were approved. The Planning Commission recommended city council approval based on Columbia exceeding, meeting or exceeding three of the seven recognizable benefits. Those were extensive landscaping that actually has been enhanced. Provision of open or public spaces that has also been enhanced. And efficient consolidation of land parcels, that's the same. And additionally, the project meets all standard approval according to Sections 138 to 537. With that, I'm going to ask Joe Anderson to go into more of the specifics about the site and the engineering.
Thank you, Wayne. Again, good evening, Madam Chair, Council. My name is Joe Anderson, Giffords Webster engineer, site civil engineer and part of the landscape architecture team. So it's that one? There we go. So part of the, whoops, you already did that. There we go. Part of the extensive landscaping, you know, we do have nearly 400 plants that we have planned. Part of the extensive landscaping, you know, we do have nearly four hundred plants that we have planned in the site. We have, as Wayne mentioned, plantings were offered to the residents adjacent to it on the east side. There, we are putting up a six-foot brick wall there as well. But in addition to that, there would be landscaping credits that we could offer. And two of them have accepted. We haven't worked out the exact plan, but we could put some taller shrubs to help even screen that. So they're excited about that. And per the PUD agreement and, oops, our discussions, for the trees out in the right-of-way, there are four mature honeysuckle trees right now. Talking with Public Works, we can keep those trees and then provide some funds for two additional trees. Or work it out that if those trees want to be removed, help plant new, six new trees altogether. We can, final language is in the PUD agreement with that. For the pocket park that meets the open space requirement in your packets, I'm assuming you have the landscape plan that can show that with a walkway that goes all the way around. On the Coolidge right-of-way side, there'll be a small, you know, kind of a fence, probably a four-foot fence with a gate. It's unlocked just to kind of give semi-privacy, but not prohibit anybody from walking in. And then it circles around. There's a couple patio spots, lots of landscape. It'll create a nice lush environment for the residents. The, as Wayne said, there's the consolidation of the land parcels. That's pretty self-explanatory. Right, again, with the retail, he went through this on the first floor, that's now parking. Wanted to kind of get into the traffic study. This was kind of a big item. If we were coming with a project, a retail commercial project, straight zoning, what would happen is we could make things work, but it would actually generate more traffic in the AM and PM. I believe in the previous packet, you would have received the actual traffic report. But basically in, with the project now, the way it is, there'll be eleven fewer trips in the morning and forty-one fewer trips in the afternoon. So it actually alleviates traffic. In addition, we are removing, there's three driveway curb cuts right now because of the homes that are there. Those can be removed because there's no park or driveways into parking spots there. So if the city wanted to add street parking along that, that frees that area up for either a full lane drive without any traffic impedance of people trying to get in and out of that. So that that's a big benefit we feel. On some of the parking, yes, there's still the total eighty total spaces, fifty-four in the north, twenty-six on the south. Basically, we are at one point four spaces per unit right now. We believe that the future master plan for multifamily may go down to one point two-five spaces per unit, so we're above that at the moment. And as was mentioned, there are bicycle racks and EV charging stations that are gonna be provided. If they're in the master plan, there are potential credits allowed to reduce that parking ratio. But we're not asking for that, I think, because we meet enough as it is. And just as we also believe that the Planning Commission has the ability to offer a ten percent waiver or variance to give, I believe, if that's...
Currently, under the current ordinance, they can look at a ten percent reduction.
So with that, we believe that we've meet all of the parking requirements for the actual residents. I mean, we don't want to build something and jam people up, so through our studies and everything, I think we would provide plenty of parking spaces for that. The improvements to the city services is another large benefit that this project is doing. Working with the DPW and the city's engineering consultant, we are providing a significant stormwater reduction system. You know, currently, it's not a mandated requirement, but we are doing underground detention and stormwater clarification. And it's going to be detained before it's put back into the combined sewer. So it really slows things down. So during a heavy rain event, all the existing conditions will be flowing. Ours will be held back, treated, and then read at least slowly, so we're not, we're actually reducing the impact currently of all the people who connect into the storm and sanitary sewer along Columbia. So I think that's a, that's a significant benefit. There's, as we've talked with the DPW, there's plenty of capacity for sanitary and water services right there. We are adding, I believe, one if two new hydrants in the area to provide additional fire coverage. And Wayne is providing a new surveillance system, mostly for residential in the building itself, but I believe some of it could be used to, you know, if there's signage, to kind of let people know that area is under surveillance to help stop potential problems if they, you know, see those. I believe Hunter is back up to kind of maybe close some things out. Thank you.
So to continue on, as we mentioned, the building height. The roof line was modified to provide a fourth floor of units. But the building height does not change much with total of four stories and the top of those exterior walls are at thirty-four feet. And the new roof line has a mid-rise of forty feet, which is the maximum height allowed by the zoning ordinance. Along with this is some, the third floor balconies do not project at all and there's an additional buffer on the easterly side, which I'll get into on the next slide. So the privacy of the neighbors, the easterly facade has no projected walkouts or balconies and has a larger setback of twenty feet for the bound, from the boundary to the property of the the property line of the single-family homes on the east side. Also, as we stated previously, a landscape park in the southeast corner and landscaping credits are provided as part of the PUD for the easterly neighbors to provide a visual buffer between the development and their homes. All of these provide more privacy to the adjacent neighborhood. And then consideration of the noise and light, the height and density of the building provides a buffer from the noise and light produced by the traffic along Coolidge Highway. So a lot of that, the building's gonna block a lot of that light or any of that noise coming from Coolidge Highway to those single-family homes. Adding a sense of security to to those single-family homes, you know, the possibility of playing in your front yard a little bit more freely. And then also any lights on the building are located under the covered parking on the first floor. And will all be spec'd to have built-in shielding along with the additional shielding from the six-foot masonry screen wall located on the on the easterly property line. So here we have the landscaping plan showcasing the easterly masonry screen wall, the southeast landscape pocket park and the bench and trash receptacles located along Coolidge Highway. There's also, this plan has also been updated from the previous plan to, again, showcase that the parking was revised, the parking circulation and spacing was revised to comply with chapter one thirty-eight of the Code of Ordinances. And then this plan here, this enlarged plan shows the southern building and the capability of a mid-sized vehicle and the turning radius of those working in those easterly parking spaces on on that south building. With that, Wayne will come back up and close it out.
Thank you Hunter. So with, those are the the high-level details of the project. We also, it's important to note that we have already gone through the PUD agreement since the October approval of the project. We, our attorney, Ryan Pluck, who was here today with us, has gone through and negotiated with the city attorney with Kristen's assistance, what we believe is a form-ready PUD for the council to consider. Of course, they would have some input on it, but it's been basically negotiated to final form. We're comfortable with the PUD as presented, the PUD agreement. You haven't seen it yet, but you would imagine seeing it at some point, but it's it's form-ready and we've spent the time getting that prepared. We know it's a high-quality project. It's gonna meet the housing demand that's here. It supports the Berkeley master plan and vision. We are absolutely confident that it's an improvement to the community, cleans up the area. And we think it's the right project, the right location for the city and we think the timing given the demand for this type of housing is 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 here. And frankly, by the time we break ground, the city will have already gone through your updates to the master plan, right? So you're in the midst of adopting certain things that we're asking for. Are going to be approved anyway, probably by September when you consider the new zoning ordinance rewrite. We think we fall right within right within the guidelines that will be ultimately adopted for the city with a more modern zoning ordinance. So we may be a little bit ahead of ourselves on that. We won't break ground until after that period anyway. So I don't really think we're getting over our skis here. I think we're just getting ahead of where the city is and prepared to break ground, probably not long after the new zoning ordinance is adopted. So we think our timing is is really good from that perspective. So we appreciate all your your input and really happy to have some dialogue and questions with you and I'll have Joe and Hunter here to help help Ryan come up short. Thank you.
Alright, so before we go into the public hearing, does anybody have any questions? Okay, so my first question is trash pickup. How is that working? Because I have one dumpster that's not facing the driveway. It's facing the street there.
Cambridge.
And then I have the other one that's actually facing a parking space. So how are these going to actually be picked up?
Good question.
Yes, so you you are right, there's one that's facing Cambridge. The other one is facing a parking space, but it is set up so the enclosure can be opened up, the dumpster rolled out on pickup days. And as you can see, kind of on that last one here, that drive aisle actually provides access to that that space where that dumpster would be rolled out to be able to be picked up, dumped, placed back down and then rolled back into the enclosure.
Where specifically would it be rolled out to?
Does it have a laser pointer on it?
It won't, it won't show up on the screen.
So the dumpster enclosure is right here, so it'd be rolled right out, right out along this curb here.
So is it not going to be like a dumpster dumpster? I mean, like, who's rolling it out?
The dumpster company. They'll pull it out, dump it and put it back. We've had our dumpster company took took a look at both plans and they accommodate projects like this all the time. The Cambridge project, you won't see, you won't be looking at dumpsters. You'll be looking at the side of the building. It'll be screened. The dumpster service come in, they'll pull it, pull their trucks in like you would any other project. Take the trash and close the gate and go on their way. Those will be accommodated by chutes coming down from inside of the building. So residents won't be dropping trash in cans along in the in the driveway. You know, of course, we took, we took that into account because we don't want garbage on the project. We want it to be a neat project. So we've dedicated two chutes. That was something we didn't have to do with the other when it was one building. But in this case, it makes sense. The south building is the smaller side of the, there'll be less residents there also. So we feel like the sizing is accommodates and works. Runco Waste Services is a company we use and I had Rob Runco take a look at the plans and he feels very comfortable that what he's, what he'll propose is be fine.
So temporarily, there would be two spots that would be unassessable while it was being, the garbage was being dumped. If it was rolled out into that that corner between...
I imagine while the while the pickup is happening, in and out, that thirty or seconds or a minute or whatever it takes.
And the balcony is...
Well, then they'll have to wait till the trash truck leaves, which, again, the trash service is usually in the mornings, pretty early. We don't even see our trash service at any of our buildings. They're out, they're out and running before we even open typically.
That's my concern because your parking is at its peak at night because people are at home and it's sleeping. So if it's coming super early, you could very well have a car parked in both of those parking spaces.
The dumpster is not going, it's not...
Past that parking space?
I'm gonna show more more specific point that spot. It's not gonna use those two parking spaces as dumpster.
So again, the dumpster enclosure is right here. The dumpster would be rolled out right here along this curb. And this is all while the truck's there. Truck pulls in, rolls the dumpster out, picks it up right here, dumps it, puts the dumpster back down, rolls it back in and then backs out, please.
It's not sitting inside of any spaces.
Is it an overhead dumpster? Is the balcony in the way?
No.
Not in that space, no.
But I mean, imagine if the truck's there and you're trying to get out, you might have to wait till the truck backs out, but that that's doesn't negate the parking space.
Could access it if both cars, if all of those cars...
Certainly, of course.
Recycling, are we having recycling in both buildings or is it only in the north?
Recycling in both. There'll be a recycling chute in the in the north building. If we can, if we can fit a recycling chute in the south building, we will, but right now, we're saying the residents will walk the recycling down to a recycling receptacle in the dumpster area. So worst case, they'll walk the recycling down in the south building. Or we'll have a collection area inside the building and our maintenance folks will move the recycling. So we'll have to accommodate that because obviously it's it's just good for the tenants to have the ability to recycle.
I totally, I totally interrupted you, but you brought up a good point. And where is the dumpster enclosure on the north building?
It's facing Cam, Cambridge, right?
Oh, thank you.
And that's easily accessible in and out of the property.
If you want me to bring up the plans, I can.
Okay.
Whatever one this is.
I'm not able, I'm disabled.
Twenty-eight it's on there.
Okay.
You just go back once.
I can't back up.
Oh, I think it's right before the, it's a little, yeah. It's right there. It looks like that's a rendering of what it's gonna look like.
Oh, it's because it's like clicked. It must have like right-clicked. Is there, is there a mouse controller somewhere or is it just...
Okay, well, I'm just gonna go back on...
Can you do it manually?
There, it'll probably work now. Cool.
There you go.
Teamwork.
So if you notice right here, see the two curb, curb islands in the middle?
Yep.
That's where the truck will go in and out.
Gotcha.
To the pocket park from that little new parking area there, is there a gate that's there that separates that parking space from the parking?
Yes, there is. Unlocked.
Where's the snow from that strip going?
So we have on the, you'll notice the snow collection area to the north product, there's two areas on both sides. And this side you have the snow for basically those three parking spots in that drive aisle. That's a good question. We might have to move that, the line of that pocket park, or put some log shrubbery there, which wouldn't have a problem in power.
My other thought on that was, some of these slides have the snow storage area corrected. I just noticed that because I noticed was like, it still isn't corrected. It's still over the sidewalks, so you want to make sure that it's consistent on all of them and it's not. So on one of the further ones down, it has snow storage area going over the sidewalk. I pointed it out last... So on one of the further ones down, it has snow storage area going over the sidewalk, I pointed it out last time. Some of them are corrected, some of them are not. But anyways, on this one, the one in the little corner there, if you have a car parked there, you're not going to be able to put storage there because you also have a wall there, right? You have your masonry wall going like this. You have your car here, you're not getting snow right there to store it there.
You know, when they're plowing?
Hmm?
When they're plowing?
Yeah, I mean, not everybody's moving their car when you're plowing, it'd be lovely if that happened, right?
Right.
But that's not reality. So that, that's not going to be a great area where you're going to be able to store it.
Those three are covered, right?
Eighty percent of the parking is covered, so the only snow we have to deal with is that back aisle.
That whole back aisle.
And we have that whole front side to the Cambridge side, which I think would accommodate one strip of snow there, worst case.
It will, it will be a lot of snow.
Depending on the snow, last winter, it wouldn't have been a problem.
Some winters, there will not be a lot of snow, but some winters, there could very much be a lot.
I think we'll have enough on the Cambridge side to stack it there. And if we have to haul it off, we haul it off. We've had to do that on extreme winters in most of our parking lots.
I love the idea, but my experience has been that that doesn't actually happen because that's what's supposed to be happening behind me and they never haul it away. So if so, then that needs to be a condition that's written into the law.
Nope.
Because that's very hard to get enforced.
We're happy to accommodate that.
Oh, there is this little rectangle on the bottom right that I keep seeing, and I have no clue what it is. It's in the like park area.
It's up to you guys.
Transformer, maybe?
Is that what that is? Oh, are, is it going to be assigned parking?
Yes.
Completely across the board?
That's the goal. Yes, and the tenant spaces will be assigned to people that have two vehicles.
Okay.
Which will be no different than a driveway.
Is that in the, I didn't go through the, I'm sorry, did not go through the PUD agreement. Is that mentioned in the PUD agreement that the parking spaces are assigned?
I believe that it is, but I will double-check and we'll make sure that's taken care of if it's not.
Not sure if it is or not, but we'll address it.
Okay, so those are my questions, I have other thoughts, but I, those are questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
So the, is it, if I recall correctly, it's 1.4 parking spaces per unit?
We're a little over 1.4, but that's the round number at the moment.
Okay, so how does that work with assigned parking? What if every unit wanted two parking spaces?
Well, they couldn't have two, we have eighty spaces, fifty-seven units. So if we have a parking threshold, we're not going to accommodate people with two cars. And we're dealing with studios and one-bedroom units, so there are no two bedrooms here, there are no lofts here. It's basically studios or one-bedroom units.
How does that work when, because four of those eighty spots are ADA spots? So really, you have seventy-six spots and a considerable amount of them are compact cars. What if everyone that rents from you has a Ford 150?
Well, you get tight. I don't think that'll be, that's not the typical ratio when you look at a parking lot. If you go to La Salle or to the Ivy, which we've looked at, majority of those cars are small to mid-sized vehicles, you're dealing with singles. The tenant mix here, I think, is going to dictate a lot of that. You're dealing with single professionals. I think the mix of resident we see at the Ivy is very similar to what we're going to see here. If you drive that parking lot, which I've done numerous times, it's a majority of small, small, mid-sized vehicles. So obviously, if we get into a parking problem, that's going to be bad for business, so we'll have to deal, we'll have to address that in real time. And we do have other parking lots in the area. So if I got into a jam, I could, I could, at our discretion, assign large, some, assign some spots, north, south, and west. We went through this discussion before about earmarking those sites, which we won't do. But from a practical standpoint, if we need to, we're in a position to do that. Which is unique again to other projects that could come or go in the city that don't have the surrounding properties under single ownership. So it'll be, it'll be a problem we'll have to solve as a building owner and manager. Can't predict that right now.
Sure.
That's a good question, it'll be thought about.
So I'm looking at the setback, section 138-397.
Which setback, the front or the rear?
So minimum front setback facing Coolidge, the west. Ten feet is required, but it looks like for the north building, it's going to be a little over seven feet. But when you factor in the balcony, it's a little less than two feet. And the south building is a little less than four feet. And if I go down to projections, what, is eight foot above grade, is that the balcony?
Yes, so all those projections that are happening on those, any of those sides of the building are all happening eight foot above the sidewalks, the drive surfaces, at a minimum of eight foot above there. So they're all, they're all.
We're average along the front edge of the parcel on both sides of us. We're not much further or back from, some of those are built right on the sidewalk. So we're about equal to fifty percent of what's average in that area, we did a study on that.
Yeah, yeah, there is a setback study in the packet that we submitted that shows the adjacent buildings, the adjacent setbacks, and ours complies with all of those adjacent setbacks.
Okay. Because on the, on the east side, it looks like you have plenty of room, you've met the requirements. Is there a reason why you chose, I guess, quote-unquote, "front-load" the west side?
It's to provide more privacy for those single-family homes, so you're not, they're not being, the building's not towering over their homes and blocking an excess amount of sunlight to their homes and, again, providing the privacy for them from any, any of the higher, third, fourth floor units.
Commissioner Woods, we took that into account, we could build ten feet off the back property line, hovering above those residents. If this was a different type of building, we could go back ten feet and stay way off the, way off the Coolidge. We wanted to center the building best we can, provide that buffer. We just thought it made better sense from a site plan standpoint. Plus, we get the park in with more green space and the parking on that back row on that masonry wall on the east. So it helped accommodate the park and.
And if I could add one thing, Commissioner Woods, our master plan does talk about building, bringing buildings more closer to the roadway along all of our downtown streets.
Any more questions before I open it up to the public hearing? All right, well, I'll invite you to sit down so I can do the public hearing.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time and we'll be here.
Okay, I am going to open the public hearing at 7:57. And just like before, I ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name, write it down so we can get it right in the minutes. You have three minutes and one time at the mic. We're not going to engage and go back and forth, but we'll listen, no comments, and try and listen how it hurts. So, does anybody have any comments?
Richard Basher, Berkeley resident on Columbia, just east of Coolidge. Three minutes for his forty-three minutes, I think, is short. Two main things that I want to talk about, the first one is the parking. Fifty percent people having small cars, I don't think it's realistic when you look at the numbers. There are only fifteen extra spots after you take into account the four ADA and four guests for fifty-seven units. That means nobody can have any guests. There's nowhere to park. Where are they going to park? They'll park on Columbia. We already have a problem parking on Columbia. I drove up here, there were seven cars in the street on Columbia already. So we, if they go somewhere, they're going to end up on Columbia again or on Cambridge, which has the same problem. I currently have a problem with parking there and it's not going to get any better than this. More cars on Columbia, it's going to be more crime because now it's easy picking for people to walk up and check cars. That means then they're going to come down and hit my house because I'm not too far away. And they're done checking cars in the street, they might start checking cars in the driveway. Haven't had a problem yet, but it's a serious concern of mine. 1.4 spaces per unit, that's not realistic today. If you look at young urban professionals who are going to go in there, these are going to be people with boyfriends, girlfriends, you know, it's, they're young, but they're going to grow up, they're going to get families. 1.4 won't be enough. 1.25 is definitely not enough. Point eight-five per bedroom is definitely not enough, but it's, it's what we're doing. The worst part that I've got with it is the traffic. If traffic leaving that area is trying to get onto Coolidge, if you've ever tried to leave Columbia or Cambridge in the morning, in the afternoon, or rush hour, you can't, it's dangerous. People are always getting into near hits, near misses. People still drive down those parking lanes, they drive it as a two-lane road still. And then you're moving this building to the front where it's going to obstruct view even more. So people pulling out, the first time someone makes a left turn and gets T-boned and gets hurt, there's going to be issues. So those are my main concerns that I have here. Nobody had, there's no such thing as thirty percent compact cars.
Everybody drives a truck.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council members. Steve Tomcoviac, Fair Housing Center, Metropolitan Detroit. I've got extra copies for others who are interested. Again, Steve Tomcoviac, Executive Director, Fair Housing Center, Metropolitan Detroit. Two fair housing concerns. The number one primary is, I thought there'd be some change in this, but it isn't. There's fifty-seven studio and one-bedroom units. No two bedrooms, no three or more bedrooms. I agree with the presentation in terms of, well, I'll make it, quote, I guess for the city of Berkeley, the PUD would make it a better place, community-centered, input from the community. Problem is, there's a group, families, that aren't welcome here. It's not sufficient. The statement, I'm just stunned by them, this place is there to appeal to single professionals. Apparently, that is the thrust of it. I've never seen a one and two-bedroom, oh, sorry, studio one-bedroom, a whole complex with just one bedroom fly from Fair Housing. Secondly, the city planning commission in the city needs to set aside units for low income. This is a great opportunity. Below market rate, set aside a significant percentage of the units to serve low-income families. And that will serve people with disabilities, it will serve minorities. There's much to be gained by it, it's what other municipalities are doing. I'm not aware of a case that has succeeded in not having more than one-bedroom units. I'm not aware of it. I've been doing fair housing for thirty-five-plus years. Doesn't work. If you go back and anybody reading and listening to the presentation, I'll say this, do it again. And within your mind, thinking about families with children, and you're going to see, they're not even thought about. We know it's wrong to discriminate based on color, disability, national origin. Familial status is just as protected. Families with three, four, five children, barely two children would fit here, perhaps one, that's it. All the other families are excluded. The census data says the average family size in Berkeley was 2.92, that's the average. Many are above that. In Oakland County, it's 3.02. They're not welcome here. So as presented, I'm sorry to say this, from our fair housing perspective, they need to go back and redesign it and open this facility up to families with children. Thank you.
I mean, most of what I have to say has been covered. My name's Jeremy Locke, I live about six doors down. In fact, the picture with the two kids, I thought those were mine for a second because that's my front yard, but I know it's not real. I'm sorry I missed the first meeting. I honestly can't believe that something like that would get approved. It is a beautiful building, wrong place, wrong time, total wrong place. That's one block north of Eleven Mile, where it goes from two lanes to one lane, where you, where like my neighbor said, you cannot get off the end of the street. And I, obviously, none of you live there or travel there in the morning or the afternoon? Because once you build that unit, there'll be no way for anyone to travel there. You won't be able to get off the street. And I asked that you go there tomorrow morning, come to my street and travel down to the end of the block and try to enter Coolidge. You won't be able to do it. You'll never be able to do it again if this building gets built. I also have children, I don't want a bunch of single people at the end of my street. I want families. I don't need a bunch of single people, and we do have a parking issue on our street. I can't get the, my spot in front of my, my house. I couldn't get it all weekend. I couldn't park my car on the street all weekend, the street was full from one end to the other. His cars are going to spill on the street. He doesn't, I mean, you guys are, I'm actually shocked. He's asked for about every exception you can ask for, hyphen, I want to go higher than you can go, I want to lower my balconies, I want nowhere to put my snow, nowhere to put my garbage. The south building's never going to recycle, we all know that. No one's walking down to put their stuff in the recycle bin. It's not going to happen. They're going to dump it in the trash. I saw the picture, I thought it was horrible, it was my view. I have no view of the sun anymore, no view of the sky, that's it, it's gone. It's, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to go back and talk to my neighbors, they have no idea what you guys are doing. And they, or they would be at this meeting. They're clueless. Nobody knows it's a four-story building either, because I've talked to several of them. That's new, I take it? Yeah, nobody knows that, you need, you need another meeting, people need to be aware. No one came to my door and spoke to me, you said you came house to house?
I knocked on her door.
What?
Okay, okay, okay.
One o'clock in the after, one o'clock in the afternoon when no one's home? He didn't come to anyone's door. And I found it odd that he kept pointing out how terrible the houses at the corner look when he owns them. This is weird, man, I'm not going to lie. This is not Berkeley, I've lived here my entire life, and that's the wrong place for that building, and you all know it. It's one block north of the biggest traffic jam in the entire city, maybe somewhere else. And it's pushed all the way up against the houses. It doesn't even fit there. Other than it being a pretty building, we all saw the pictures, does it look like it goes there? And then you put a view from like my, my direction? There's not one of you that can honestly think that that looked good and that you would want that at the end of your street. No way. Drive down my street, any morning, any afternoon, you can't get off it. This is going to make it a thousand times worse. The whole not taking care, those buildings do look terrible at the corner, tell them to take care of them.
Anybody else? We did get some emails. One was from the gentleman who just spoke from the Fair Housing, so he summed up his email pretty well. One from Maddie Stewart. Who talks a number about the zoning code. But also refers to the high-rise multifamily.
It's not a multifamily, but it's not, you can call it family. I'm going to split.
I can't.
And again, kind of goes point by point, and is worried about flooding and infrastructure visibility and increased traffic. Has some complaints about it not meeting the master plan. And we have one from Paul Jordan, who's also opposed to it. He believes it will negatively affect the surrounding neighborhood, the sheer size of it. That it lacks adequate onsite parking. That it lacks adequate onsite parking. And is worried about a development of the size, putting undue stress on the infrastructure in the neighborhood. And that is all the ones we have for the email. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 8:09. We will talk about the parking spaces and whether we find them appropriate or not. Love it if there were low-income units set aside. But as of this, I'm sure we don't really have a mechanism to ask or demand that. The height. So, what is allowable right now on Coolidge is 40 feet. So, part of the struggle is that's not what's identified in the master plan, and I get that. But what is allowable at this moment is 40 feet. So, the height, while feeling very big, is what is allowed and has been allowed for decades at this point.
I have a question about the 40-foot though, because is it 40-foot to the peak? Apparently, it's 40 feet to the mid-rise. Is that how the, how the ordinance is written?
Yes, and that's very typical of zoning ordinances. Except for flat roofs, which would be to the very top.
I walk my, I live on the opposite side of Columbia, about five or six houses down. Or the opposite side of Coolidge, on Columbia. So, I am crossing Columbia every day, taking my daughter to and from school. And I agree that the city could definitely do something better about trying to get that parking lane and not be an additional driving lane on both sides of the street. Because I often almost get creamed just trying to turn right on my street. Hopefully, I know the DDA isn't trying to like create plans with bumpouts and stuff to make that better. It's just not a quick process. I think I addressed what I can easily address before we discuss.
I mean, infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Based on engineering review, this is improving. At least the stormwater, electrical grid can handle it and sanitary can handle it per DPW review.
Yes. Our, our experts in those fields say that it can handle this. So, that's where we have to, where we have to trust. And with that, let's move to discussion. I have lots of things to discuss. We could. Do you guys wanna talk about the recognizable benefits before I move on to like, does that site design?
Let's do site design first.
Do you want me to start talking or do you guys have comments?
Comments, but you can start.
Okay, so I will start by saying that new little parking area, to me, is a really bad idea. You are, all of those cars will have to be backing out of that. And then backing out across the sidewalk along a wall to get back onto the street, which is all kinds of dangerous for a pedestrian walking by. Based on your turn radiuses, it looks like if I was gonna try and turn in that first one, I have to be like almost on the sidewalk to like whip my car around into there. It, it feels way too cramped. And it really feels like a bad, bad idea, right? I mean, like, if you go in forwards, how are you getting out? You have to back out. Like, there's not, maybe if you go that furthest car, you can like, I don't even know. I don't even think you can get this way. Maybe the furthest car can. But a lot of those cars are gonna have to be backing up to get out. And it's blind. And even if you're pulling forward, it's still a blind area, because you have the masonry wall and according to the pictures, and a little, boop, out this way too. So, your vision of that sidewalk is gonna be completely blocked when you're trying to get out of there. Forwards or backwards, but that's just towards backwards. So, I'm not a fan of that at all. I took the two pocket park spaces and traced on a piece of graph paper all of the green space on it. And it looks like this new one has about 20% more imperviousness than the last one did. So, I was a real hard sell on the whole landscaping thing. And what it looks like is it's been decreased fairly significantly. There's a lot of concrete here now. Not loving that. And I, I think it was mentioned in our notes, but that south building concerns me. First off, about half of the units overall are one and a half bathrooms, which would indicate that you're expecting more than one person to live there. More than one person lives there. We have crappy mass transit around here. Probably more than one person is driving there. And in that south building, you have 18 units. 11 of those are one and a half bathrooms. The parking in that building is woefully, woefully underparked. And I don't know how much that building is gonna love to walk a block from the other building to get to, with their groceries or whatever else, to get to their building to go up. So, that's a big concern for me as well. And then, so I have the same backing up issues on the north side of Columbia, or on the north building on Columbia. So, those first two parking spaces are again gonna have to back up over the sidewalk in order to get out and straighten up. Again, with the wall on one side. Again, dangerous and problematic and not great for the welfare. And then, the parking is tight. And on one hand, assigned parking makes me feel better, because you're going to know. But on the other hand, like you can't assign the handicapped spot unless you have a handicapped person for that spot. If you have no handicapped people in your building, those spots are now just remaining empty. And you have some labeled in here that they're guest parking. And again, when you're really tight and you're labeling these guest parking, so it's not an assigned to an apartment, that's like making it even tighter. So, the parking is really starting to concern me, especially if you get rid of, which I think you should, that little park, pocket park area thing. And the design, I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep saying it. It is a big white building. It's going to look ginormous. A little bit of grading you have does not, does minimal for interest as far as breaking up that massing. I know I keep saying it, but we created the design guidelines based on great principles for a walkable downtown and making things feel appropriate to the pedestrian, as well as showing people the community pictures and saying, what do you like? Even during our zoning rewrite process, we showed pictures of different multifamily houses. Flat, white buildings are not what anybody picked, right? They like those articulated with some color to it, because they're visually interesting. So, you know, I keep saying it, and every time I see it, I'm gonna keep saying it. I really think you could do a lot better, so that when people walk by it, they go, oh, my God, it's a beautiful building. And not, holy crap, that's huge. And I fear this is going to get, holy crap, that's huge. So, that's my spiel for the moment.
Sure. I likewise had a concern about the parking. I was very concerned until I heard about it being assigned. It made me feel a little bit better. But it is very tight. And like I said before, you got, you got four ADA spots. So, really, you got 76 minus the four guest spots. So, you're, you know, you're down even a little bit more. And I understand that you have the lots, neighboring lots that are available. But like Lisa said, no one's gonna wanna walk a block in the cold and wind and ice and snow and with their groceries. And they're very, very tight. I know you showed that one parking where the, the cars were going into the, in the south, or, yeah, the south building. It looked to me like they were pulling out. But if you're coming off of Coolidge and you're turning into any of those four spots along the north parking lot of the south building, those are, that's tough to get in any of those spots. I got a small truck and I wouldn't wanna park there. So, parking is a concern in my, in my mind. And, and, and there's a lot of compact spots. I don't necessarily disagree with the, you know, the 1.4, looking at the parking studies that we've done in recent months. But when almost 50% of the parking spaces that you have available are very, very tight and for compact vehicles only, that gives me some concern. Moving along to the building. I thought it was too ginormous to begin with. And when you got rid of the bridge, which, I'm glad you got rid of the bridge, by the way. That's great. But the fact that you added those units on the fourth floor, or the third floor, fourth floor, just makes it butting up to the residential neighborhood that much more imposing, exactly. And that concerns me. I, I, I'm looking at the, the shadow study. I mean, that's, that's pretty daunting to, to be living a, a house or two or three to the east of that building and you got no evening sun at all. I, when we did the master plan, I liked the idea of the building stepping down as they went into the residential. I didn't love the idea of the, what it looked like before, but at least it, it did step down a little bit. And this does not step down at all. So, that concerns me as well. And that's what I got.
I, I guess regarding that, there's a lot of concerns about traffic and congestion in the area. And there was a, a traffic impact study done, which seemed to find that there wasn't gonna be any significant impact to the area, other than what's already there. The Skiffles-Webster study. So, I think that's important to note too. Just given some of the concerns that have been brought up and addressed. And then, Kristin, do we know kind of where we're at with the parking for the zoning?
Is probably the last issue get to resolve. And it's something that I think will be brought before the Planning Commission and Council at your joint meeting in July. There have been, as Chair Kempter can attest to, a lot of different numbers thrown out. And I know you guys talked about this before. So, I can't say what the number will be that's in the draft. We know that .85 is the number that was, I'm sorry, .85 spaces per bedroom was the number that the parking study talked about. We, on the Steering Committee and at the Planning Commission, have tossed around the 1.25, 1.5. I think there is consensus that two spaces per unit does seem too high. And anyone can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that, that there's consensus that that is too high. I don't know where that number is going to end up. A lot of the discussion has revolved around more of the two and three bedrooms than the one-bedroom and studios. So, I feel like that gets a little bit more contentious. But that's really all I can provide now. Stay tuned.
Any other discussion? Do you wanna talk about recognizable benefits?
Let's talk about recognizable benefits.
So, all right, recognizable benefits. I'm gonna start again last night. I think there's a few that are easy for us to just take off the table, right? It is not a preservation of or enhancement of historic resources.
Number three, yep.
Right, so it's not, number three is off.
Number seven.
Yeah.
Number seven is no? Is that what you're saying? Or number seven is yes?
No, it's a no.
No.
Number seven is a no?
Yeah.
138533.
Okay, so three is off, seven is off. Everybody agree?
I think so. My computer died, so.
So, that is no preservation or enhancement of historic resources and no complimentary, complimentary mix of uses or variety of materials. Okay, so.
And number, oh, yeah, number six, I think, is, is a no.
I would agree. Anybody? Okay, taken six off. Efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels. We were all in agreement of that last time. Are we still in agreement this time?
Yep.
Yes. Are you working your way up? Now we're on number four. Okay.
I'm sorry. I saw that one. I was like, oh, that's an easy one. All right, so let's go to four. Provision of open space or public basins.
We found this is yes, based on the open space definition and interpretation, that it is an open space. So, I am still in agreement that it's met.
Yeah, I think we have to say yeah, because they are, how the ordinance is defined right now, it does not need to be public, public space. It could be just for the residents. Is that something that we're changing?
Yes.
The whole PUD section, when you get a chance to take a look at it, is, it's gonna be substantially different than this. But I think how it's written right now, we, I think we
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right, so four is yes. I'm gonna go with two, because I think we all know where I am on one. Extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements of this title. I tend to say no. Carlisle-Wortman said no. And it's gotten smaller since last time.
This is true.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
I think it's met. I think it's still a lot on the site for what's on the site.
So do I. I think there's almost 400 plantings or new plantings on the site, which is, which seems substantial to me, an improvement.
It's only on the south side though, right?
I mean, there's a few, I think scattered in the front, but.
From what I saw, it was preserving the trees.
Beyond what we have asked other developments to do, and we found whether they met our landscaping requirements.
And we don't technically have a landscape currently.
Well, we don't have it specified clearly. Like, the new one is like, you need X amount of trees and Y amount of bushes. What we have is that the Planning Commission has to find that we find that there is an adequate amount. And we've been somewhat, I don't wanna say demanding, but we have required there to be a reasonable amount of landscaping.
But I am in somewhat agreement with you that it has been reduced from what, what was originally from what, what was originally approved.
I think it has been reduced, but it's still significantly more than we probably would need.
So yes? Michael, are you a no or a yes?
In terms of going beyond, no, it's reduced. So I'd say no.
Josh, are you a yes?
Yep.
But we do, we have to evaluate it as a new PUD. So even if it was reduced from the last time, is it still more extensive than what would be baseline required? That's how I'm, I would interpret this.
Also defer to Carlisle-Wortman, who says that it has not actually gone. And I don't think it does. It's all concentrated in one area, so it feels like it's a lot as opposed to extend it into both buildings. But if the north building came to us, I would say absolutely not. That does not, does not have anything close to an office.
So can I interject for just a moment? So, and, and feel free to jump in, Michelle, if you would like to. So there's two things the Carlisle-Wortman response does, does mention that I think warrants some discussion from the Planning Commission. That's the planting on the adjacent single-family homes, which I think we all know that they've offered, and the other is a green wall. I don't know if Michelle has anything else to add.
Yeah, so because of the rearrangement of that south building, the pocket park, I was hoping the applicant could offer some clarity on how that will change the overall plantings and area. Specifically, the, the plantings. I mean, you can see the plant schedule, how it, it, there's a difference between their latest site plan submission and the one that was approved before. But in general, yeah, the, a concern we had was the plantings along the neighboring single-family homes, but it sounds like perhaps there's language within the development agreement that's providing for those. It just wasn't on the plan itself.
And there's also, is there also a landscape credit that's being offered?
That, that's what's being offered, yeah. And there's the straight trees, although it's up for you to consider if that's extensive.
I would not consider trees that were already in there by the city extensive. Okay, so has that changed anything? You're still a yes?
Still a no.
Still a no, still a yes. I'm still no.
No.
You're still no.
Yes.
You're a yes. Alright, so we do not have consensus on two. One, high-quality architectural design beyond the site plan requirements of this title. Site plan requirements would be design guidelines, right?
No, they would be the requirements for the Gateway District, the underlying zoning, which is really just two things, that it has to have a front entrance and there has to be forty percent transparency. And there can't be wood siding. So that's really all that the Gateway District site requirements have.
The design guidelines for site plans, right?
For site plans, and this is a PUD. I, I, I'll defer to Michelle there, too, but we looked at this with Megan and the, the section that talks about the design guidelines specifically says they're only applicable to site plans.
Right, but when we're looking at this, it has to go beyond what we would ask of a site plan, right? I mean, that's what the words say.
So this goes back to our ordinance being not great. And I would say that would be open then for the Planning Commission's interpretation. I did go through the design guidelines and look at this in terms of the elements that we were looking at. And if you'll remember in the design guidelines, this will, in the new ordinance, we actually enumerate some of the things that need to be included specifically. In this in-between version, we kind of look at the design guidelines and say, in staff and consultant's opinion, is it substantially in compliance? I did go through and look at the different elements. And my staff recommendation was that it was in compliance. And I can, if you give me a few minutes, pull that up and, and note the specific things and pages that I thought were in compliance with the design guidelines. This gets a little bit gray, though, because of the way that it's written and the way that we did the ordinance amendment. If you wanna move on to other aspects and give me a minute to pull it up, I can.
Do we need her to look at it? I mean.
I mean, from my point of view, I still agree. The other building looked nice. To me, it met the intent of master planning and I was part of that design.
This one?
This, this does, too. Yes.
So you're a yes. If you need her to pull it up, tell me you need her to pull it up. I just don't want her to have to go through the work if it doesn't. Okay, I've read the total, like.
Yes.
I don't know how familiar we all are with the design guidelines, 'cause half of you of these are hearing we have them.
And it's a big document.
And it's a big document.
No, I mean, I, I am unfamiliar, but just, you know, aesthetically, you know, I think it's from understanding this project a bit more. I mean, it seems like it's a high-quality project, good building. Obviously, it will, you know, with the, with the required public works projects that will be associated with this building, it will increase capacity and address some other issues of the city. But yeah, when it comes down to design and aesthetics, that's where I have an issue. That's where I have trouble kinda seeing my way through approval of how it is presented. So, yeah, right now I'm a no.
I, I am a yes.
I am a no.
I'm a yes.
I have found that, if anyone wants any more information.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
If you have it handy, yes.
So it's seven pages long, so I'm gonna quickly try to, to summarize this. And I can send it for future. But these are the elements that I noted as being included. And I'll start at the very top with building, character, and placement. Locate the building between the street and the parking area, small public spaces linked to the sidewalk, urban streetscape design and landscaping, windows facing the street. It goes also into building orientation, and that talks about the entry facing the street, and also includes providing outdoor spaces and balconies as elements that should be included. So those are noted, too. Connectivity is another area where this seemed to check the boxes. Doors that open directly onto a public space, use of landscaping through linear park to accentuate, accentuate site circulation. There were some things that noted internal walkways. And this was written in the previous version, so there's some things that would no longer apply. For example, the bridge previously provided through-block connections for pedestrians and autos, that would no longer apply now that the bridge is gone. An outdoor amenity space was another thing that I think would be open for interpretation, but perhaps could be considered as the pocket park. One of the things that was not included was public art. So there were a couple instances in the Carlisle-Wortman review where a mural was suggested as an, an option. And we do have a great mural program here in the city, so I noted that as one thing that was not included. Parking lot screening, there are different elements, and I won't go through each of them, but the Columbia Incorporated several of those as well. Landscaping and street design, there were several elements as well, coordinated landscape palette as well as, excuse me, coordinated site furnishings. And then there were other more technical spaces, including stormwater management, service, and utility areas. Inclusion of a landscape buffer was another thing. So that's been included in some aspects of the site as well. And then if you look at the adjacent landscaping on the adjacent properties, there was a section that's on new building design. So this talks about height variations, architectural character. So I noted that the decorative metal panels could be considered in that. I, I, if, if we were to postpone this, I can send this as a future document. It's just kinda hard to scan the seven pages.
No, I appreciate it.
I guess part of my thing with that is that, like, some of that's site design and some of that's architecture, right? And so unless we're looking at the architecture part of it.
For this particular element.
Yeah.
Yes, so there, the things that the design guidelines focus on are architectural character, building mass and scale, building articulation, ground floor design, iconic design features, building elements, building materials, and then energy efficiency and, and things associated with that. So the items that I thought from a staff perspective were met were the architectural character with the decorative metal panels, the overall facade character of the area, since it's composed of mostly brick, which is the material. We're looking for durable materials, so that, that as well. The fact that the ground floor design highlighted the primary building entrance with an awning and oriented towards a major street. Previously, I noted the bridge as an iconic design feature. And that's what, that's what I have in this quick moment.
May I add something? May I add something?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the previous submission, obviously, there were two features that are now missing. The, the bridge and the variety and the building height. And it doesn't seem that in, in taking those away, that anything was added to sort of make up for those lost architectural features. So I don't think it would be unreasonable to, to request additional architectural features or something that would help break up that massing, which has now just grown even larger since this Planning Commission was not commenced before that it had met the requirements. That's why we suggested a mural or a green wall.
Right, and I, I would love to see some, some depth because it, it, it's wide, it's tall, it looks imposing.
Square.
I, I, I want people to love it, too. I would love, I would love to be able to say that I find one as a benefit. So has that changed anybody's mind? Because right now we have two recognizable benefits.
Has not changed my mind.
Mine either.
Let's just talk about if there's anything anybody else needs to say. Is there anything else, anyone else needs to say about the standards?
There is one benefit that the commission did not discuss. I think you all agreed that this didn't apply before, but for the sake of going through each, the complimentary mix of a variety of housing types.
We did, that was across that.
Oh, sorry, then I missed that.
I know one thing that, looking at the elevations, I think it would be, if, if this were by chance to come back, we postponed it tonight and it comes back before us, I would love to see in the elevations the relationship with the property line to the building on the elevations. Because for me, it's confusing to look at the elevations and, and, because there's, you know, there's some overlap. The, the south, southern building kinda bumps out a little bit further than the north building. It'd just be nice to see that, that difference of where the property line is in relationship to the, the proposed buildings.
And, and also, yeah, I guess to that point, the, the clearance of the balcony, I know it's eight feet, but to just kinda visualize that, 'cause, you know, I, I have visions of people jumping up on the balcony, hanging on and climbing up, you know.
Middle school boy style.
Yeah, exactly.
Chair Kimner, sorry to interrupt Commissioner Woods, but it might, I don't know that I'm understanding exactly what you're asking for, Commissioner Donlan, so if this does come back, it might be worth it to ask the applicant to make sure they understand what you're requesting.
Yep, I'm speaking of Sheet A 3.1, where there's the building elevations. I'd like to see where the property line is, like if it's right here with a dimension.
Oh, the adjacent, like, residential property line?
Yeah, yep. Where it is in relationship to the right-of-way and where it is with the residential property line with dimensions.
Yeah, and I guess it'd be even more succinct, a picture, like rendering like this of someone walking down the sidewalk, of what it would look like with those dimensions as presented.
And I, I mean, I recognize, I recognize that it's a business, right? And the idea of a business is to make money. I don't love the fourth floor. I think a lot of problems would be solved by eliminating the fourth floor, making the, making the architecture a little prettier, and maybe minimizing some of that cement in the pocket park area. I don't love the fact that we, it's like, anybody from the north side of the building is not going to utilize that. It's only a benefit for the south side. I could live with that. But I think a lot of, a lot of reservations would be solved with that fourth floor uprooting up and returning some more landscaped area and less cement in that pocket park.
Is there an opportunity for us to respond to some of this? Because there are some answers, I think some things have been missed that I could clear for you in a few minutes. Just points you raised as concerns.
Yes.
Yes.
If, if I'm right, thank you. And believe me, we'll work with you if we have clarity on what you're looking for. But eliminating a fourth floor kills a project, just in terms of density. The height, first of all, much of this is very subjective. And I think because you don't have clear guidelines, it's, it's, it's challenging. And it becomes a matter of taste, and it becomes a matter of what you like or don't like or what you think may or may not happen, becomes part of this dialogue, whether it's factual or not. What we presented are eighty legitimate parking spaces that conform size-wise, turn radius-wise, et cetera. But it was one of the concerns, one of those three or four we added in that area. It'd be very easy for cars to pull in and back into those spaces and pull out, or as you're backing out, back out to your right and pull straight out. You indicated the wall was six feet. It's not. It drops, the plan shows the wall dropping to 2.5 feet at the street level, so a vehicle can see over the, over the wall. That was one of your concerns. The other issue of the parking on the street, when you eliminate those curb cuts, we're actually adding twelve parking spaces on Coolidge. It doesn't come into the calculation, but it does alleviate a lot of the concern we heard from the residents, which I, I appreciate. We're putting twelve parking spaces on Coolidge, which would take nine, make this ninety-two if those were taken into account. And I believe that your new zoning ordinance will take the off-street parking into account, at least it's being discussed. But you can't, you can't argue the fact that there's twelve spaces going on the street that don't exist today, which will alleviate pressure on Cambridge and Columbia. Just, just take that into account. It definitely improves the infrastructure to your point, Mr. Bardas. The pocket park does not have twenty percent less plant material. Actually, we extended the plant material to the south wall, where we didn't have it before, right up to the wall. So I think it's probably net zero, up or down.
I, I traced it out.
I know.
Counted a square.
But again, we have, I know, we have landscape architects and engineers that laid that pocket park it out. And it shows. Well, we're picking up some parking and we're reallocating parking in the areas. But the parking spaces are legit. They're not small parking spaces. They, they conform with the city requirements. So we're not asking for anything, you count spaces that aren't approved anywhere on any other development in the city that have been recently approved. The one and a half bath comment, that's a design feature. To have a half bath for somebody is just a design feature. Doesn't mean two people can live in the house. It's not two full baths. You're talking about a, a toilet and a sink inside the unit. If you wanted that designed out, we could certainly, if that alleviated your concern and you didn't want someone to have a half bath available in a unit, that could be dealt with if we, if required, but it's, it's a matter of comfort. You wanna, you want people to live, live in these places, right? Doesn't mean two people are gonna live there and someone's gonna shower on the sink. The, the parking on the south side is adequate for the unit count there. We, we looked at it. If you don't like the design of the building, again, that's subjective. I could show this to a hundred people and I'd have as many love it as maybe don't like it. But is that the basis for a PUD? Is someone, is your, your, your impression or your, your like or dislike, is that what a PUD is subject to? You're knocked down the high-quality design, which, again. You knocked down the high-quality design, which, again, very subjective. There are a lot of add-backs that Kristen pointed out after you took your census that weren't discussed or debated prior to you taking note of that. And I think she noted some very, very good add-backs for the design. The landscaping, you approved the landscaping before. We're saying we're at the same net landscaping and material-wise as we were back in October. The north building has a lot of tall grasses all around the property. It's got a lawn in front, it's tall grasses, we have the landscape in the back. You can't put more landscaping on this site than we've allowed for unless we shrink the building. If we shrink the building, you can't build it because it becomes uneconomical. You can't develop it. You've got to have a certain number of units. So, the balance is, we're putting as much green space on this project as we can. You want a mural, we'll put a mural on. You want a green wall, we'll find a green wall, no problem. But we think we've exceeded the landscaping requirements, because your design, your design doesn't call for specific landscape requirements. We looked. You're asking us to throw darts against the wall, and we've done that twice. You approved it once. Now, we're coming back with as much landscape as we had and you're saying it's not adequate. Taking the bridge out was an add-back. Everyone loved the idea of taking the bridge out. Now, you're knocking the design and saying, well, you're losing that feature, which is just counterintuitive when you think about it. If it's something you hated, we take it away, now you say, well, you lose a point for that. That was your planner's comment, right? So, it's very subjective. We think the parking is adequate. We think it complies. We're not putting in parking here that won't fit the future standard if we waited until September and came in and submitted this plan. So, I think there's a lot of subjectiveness, bantering back and forth, and we're really down to two points. Is the building height, the high-quality design or not, and do we meet the design standard for landscaping? We would argue, we would argue that we've exceeded in both cases, in addition to the parcel assembly and the open space, which approves. I find it a stretch to come back today and have you argue on points that were okay before. We haven't significantly decreased anything. In fact, we've increased. We've improved the traffic flow under the building on a point that was missed by the planners in our first review, in terms of aisle size, space size. We've made that adjustment. I don't notice we can do at this point to make a, to have a viable project. If you'd like us to come back and re-present to you, I would like to have a work session with someone that can give us specific guidelines so we don't do this again. We believe we've got a good project here. It complies. If it doesn't comply today, it'll comply in September, October, when you're done with the master plan. We're dancing around the landscape thing, which you don't have clear guidelines on. Our parking works, given where the project, where this is going in the city. And I'm just struggling with why this is a problem, to be very frank with you. And to go back through the process is not only costly, it's time-consuming. And we have demonstrated for well over a year now, with this our fourth or fifth presentation to planning, that we want to build a project. We were here a couple of times before October in work sessions. So, unless we can get better clarity on some of the points, and I'm happy to work with you on those, I don't, I'm not going to just continue to bang our head against the wall. So, that's just being very, as honest as I can be with you about where we stand on the project today. I'd like to build it, but I need some, you need to work with us on a couple of these points and be less subjective and actually more adherent to what the planning commission, what the department has recommended. They're your planning department. They've recommended approval. You voted to approve this in the past. The fourth floor, your other point in the height, and I'll be done. You could build a forty-foot-high house in the middle of a residential neighborhood right now. Someone could come in, pull a permit, and they'd have a building permit to build a forty-foot-tall house, no problem. We're thirty-four feet to the outside edge of the building and we're setting everything else back well within the building envelope on the roof. We've moved back the mechanical, which used to be up on the edge of the roof. We're getting rid of the rooftops, which residents had a problem with people being on the roofs, noise and everything else. We're not adding a floor. That floor was there, but those studios were just two-story units. So, it's the same unit count, same number of residents, same envelope, same footprint. But now you comment as we don't like the fourth floor.
My point with the fourth floor is that if that was eliminated, your parking counts would be better. Like, yes, it would be better on the residents, because it wouldn't feel so looming. It's like it's a multitude of things that I thought. I do recognize that you can go to forty feet. And I do recognize that a lot of these things are subjective, because that's how they're written. And there are going to be times in planning commissions where there are things that are subjective. Our newer versions will be less subjective to some degree, but part of a PUD is that subjectiveness, right? And so.
Right. Reversing the position on something you've already approved on the landscaping is challenging, of course it is. It's the same project and it's been modified to liking of, we thought, the community, based on direction we've been given and undertook on our own time and our own dime, right? We came back, we didn't go to council like we could have and tried to push it through at that point. We came back with what we thought was a more thoughtful, community-centered project, which we have. And frankly, it feels like you're reversing your position from where, what you approved before. And I'll just go on record with that. Thank you.
I have a process question. So, we have the actual zoning. The Carl Wartman, there's four zoning actual ordinance exceptions we have to provide. Then we have to find three of the seven benefits. The third thing is, do we have any PUD requirements that we can add in at this point? Or are those sort of set from before?
What do you mean by that?
The actual PUD with the city, or the contract, I should say.
Like, if you were to say we would approve something subject to the addition of X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if we did that. I don't recall doing that before.
No, I don't think you, you know what, you did do a couple of conditions before. You added the trees along Coolidge and you added the, making sure in writing there was the landscaping on the adjacent neighboring property. So, yes, the commission could request and discuss with the applicant anything they want, just like you guys did last time.
And I was going to ask if, for the no's, if those conditions were attached again, does that change?
So, those two conditions are already being offered.
Oh, they're already in?
Yes. With this iteration.
They were added in.
Yes, those two things were added in, so they wouldn't need to be attached to anything.
Okay, because I just wanted to circle the conversation to the exceptions to the zoning ordinance that were noted. And there's three that we were already accepted before, and the new one is the compact car space change. So, in my point, in my understanding of these four, which is deficient setback from Coolidge, projections onto Coolidge, deficient number of parking, and then overage of the number of compact spaces, I would accept all of those exceptions. Because three of them are the same.
So, I don't know what to do at this point. If we can't agree on recognizable benefits, I think it's good to give clarity as to what we want. And we can talk about which ones we're like totally okay with and which ones might depend on. But I think some of that depends on, like, what, as far as like compact car usage or parking, I think some of that might depend on what comes back, right?
Chair Kepner, if I may, I think you're absolutely right, that if the vote lands where it looks like it's going to land or you're not able to pass a motion tonight because you are down one member, it would be worth it to give clarity to the applicant about what you're looking for and what you would need to see if, for those benefits to be met. And it seems like it would be the landscaping and the architecture where there could be some clarity offered. But I do think it'd be a worthwhile conversation to have with the applicant, what they're willing or able to provide and what the commission, who is struggling with this, would like to see.
Although, I feel out of the four benefits, two of them are three. Don't want to do numbers, they're three-three, so I'm not sure which way it falls.
Correct.
You know, like honestly, because like it is.
Right, I mean, that becomes really awkward about all of this.
Yeah.
I still think it would be worthwhile for the people who are struggling or who are no's to say what they feel like should be included. And the Carlisle-Wartman review for each of the benefits really provides some feedback about options that you could think about and ask the applicant about, but obviously, you could ask for anything. You know, your recommendation or suggestion about going to three floors is an option that the applicant said they can't entertain, but that's a good example of a back-and-forth type thing.
Right.
Does it have a question in a format of something like this? So, would this just be a separate working group meeting?
No, I would say you should talk right now.
Right.
You're all here except for Commissioner Hamamay. So, I.
Could I add? A little more clarification on the landscape right now?
Briefly.
So, if in consideration to get more green space versus concrete, we could eliminate the southernmost patio that has the two tables. We thought that would be a nice sitting area, but we could remove that area, come up with some more plantings, and instead of a concrete walk that goes through, we could make that a permeable crushed stone that still meets ADA requirements for travel. That would make it more permeable and more green. And I do want to just make sure that you're considering that all of the landscaping along the Coolidge Highway or the Coolidge Road with the benches and trash receptacles that we can work with the city on their style, those are in little concrete areas. If you, we could not have those and make that more green space or that, you know, our intent was to make those the public benefit as part of the landscape. So, that's, I just wanted to make sure that.
So, the last design, I believe that's what you had, you had told me it was going to be a crushed gravel or whatever it was. That was the little path through there.
Right.
And it's now turned into like a sidewalk and like a concrete pad here, and then it come out a big concrete pad here, and then some more concrete here. And so, for me personally, yes, as much of that as you can turn into like pervious surfaces and green makes me happy.
Okay. I mean, if that would be a conditional approval for that benefit, we could make that, I think? If that's written in tonight, I think we would be able to do that as a condition of approval?
So, I'm one person. Once we get past the recognizable benefits, I then have bigger concerns, too, right? So, I feel like, yeah, I mean, but I also feel like I would want to see it as far as the landscaping. I personally have big concerns with that upper corner there. And according to your pictures, I don't know if I saw somewhere that specifically said it was going down, but according to your pictures, it doesn't look like the other side of that drive budding the neighborhood drops down to. In that picture, it's.
Oh, just the screen wall you're talking about?
Yeah.
Not on our plan. It's not on our plan that we have, so that's why we didn't see it.
Yeah, that was.
Follow your request for those changes. We brought them in. So, I just call out there.
I feel like that parking area is super problematic. And I would like to see somebody else doing it hard. It's going to be difficult to pick up your garbage. It's difficult to park and back up. You don't have a plan for the snow removal in that spot.
So, if they're at one point four, those, so it's eighty spaces, seventy-two would be at one point two-five. So, would like removing those spaces to create more?
I don't think one point two-five is adequate.
And also, too.
It would be one point three-three, but.
A large portion of those spaces are compact.
Are then compact. And I'm not really sure how you keep track of that when you're signing. Like, do you ask, do you ask everybody what size car they drive before you accept them into the apartment? So, that way you know you can actually fit them.
That seems like an operational issue, though, like honestly.
Especially if those were removed from that location. It sounded like there was potential for off-site.
Well, but he doesn't want to be encumbered by that.
No.
That becomes a problem for us to approve it based on the idea of them being off-site, because if something happened and he were to sell a building for whatever reason, then those parking spaces disappear unless he's willing to encumber those in some way.
I'm okay with one point three-three. Because I think we're headed that, some direction like that anyways.
But they're not one, it's not one point three-three regular, normal spaces. There's a portion of them, a large portion of them that are compact, and there's a small portion of them that are double parked. They're not regular twenty or eighteen by nine-foot spaces. That's my hang-up. I don't really necessarily have a problem with the parking ratio. All right, you know, the two, I agree, too, is two per unit is too much.
I think anyone renting is going to take that into a factor when they sign a lease to what they want. Personally, people, I know people that rent these type of places in Royal Oak, and these are the exact questions they have, and they pass up a place if it doesn't work for them. If they have two cars, they don't have an EV spot, whatever, they don't rent there. So, I don't, I think it's an operational issue that would work itself out with leasing. And you can't park on the street overnight, so no one's going to be parking on the street overnight here anyways.
Yeah, I look at more at like, since it's a residential, or not residential, but multifamily, more overnight parking, less like coming and going.
Yeah.
All the spaces. At least that's how I look at it from it.
I mean, that's going to be the peak time.
Right, right, it's overnight. And I mean, not to redesign, but just throwing it out. It would be a little more probably easily accessible from the north building if those, that parking space, right, wasn't there? So, if that was more of the entrance to the side into the, instead of the parking space.
It's like.
On the north?
Yeah.
That first one?
Right.
I mean, I don't even think, like, according to all of our codes, you can't back up over a sidewalk, so both of those are ones.
Well, that parking space is in the right of way, too, isn't it? I don't know.
Oh, no, I just meant like. For the north building, it'd be easier to access the pocket park. So, like if that.
The south building?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, people from the north could more easily access the south building pocket park. Because that was one of the things you had mentioned.
Oh, by having that, that parking area there?
Right, so if that was removed. Right, right.
Be way safer.
You know what I mean, like, something like that, that could be potential, you know, kind of open it up a little bit more.
I mean, if I take away the problem parking spaces, it's one, two, three, four, five, six less spaces.
Four, right?
Because of those two, that you're going to have to back up over the sidewalk. You can't back up over the sidewalk. On the north building?
Oh, on the north building?
And just be the ones that are facing or pointed north on, was that Columbia? I don't think the one, or.
She's concerned about this one.
Yeah.
This one, and then these.
I see that one.
Oh, hang on, I'm sorry. Let me get on the right way up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This one, this one, and then these four, right?
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Those six.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about maybe that one, but yeah.
No, she's worried about backing up and somebody's walking on the walk. I don't have so much a problem with those two, but.
Right, then put it at what, seventy-four?
Madam Chair, may I chime in?
When considering, like, eliminating this problem area, really, it's only this one that needs to be eliminated in order to pull in, because these can be turned into tandem similar to those and access from here.
Which is what it was before.
Right.
Then, I think before it was more tandem here, right? Then, I think before it was more tandem here, right, where they tandem up there before too?
There were eighteen- Like this before? No, sixteen before, fourteen. Oh, no, there, there were two tandems before, and the, these trash rooms, mechanical rooms went into this space.
Gotcha. I mean, yeah, except with those being tandem, I don't love the tandem spots, but they'll figure that out. How are we feeling about the compact car thing?
I don't think it's an issue.
I do not either, it's seventeen percent over.
It doesn't really bother me.
I guess since the parking spaces are assigned, I don't, I mean, it's their problem if they can't get anybody to rent there.
From, from a number-wise at least, out of eighty percent, thirty percent, or eighty spots, thirty percent would be twenty-four, and forty-seven point five is thirty-eight, so it's fourteen more overall that are compact.
I'm guessing that means you're fine.
I mean, I don't know, yeah, sure. I, I think it is, it's kind of like an operational issue, like, just, it's, spaces are premium, so if it doesn't fit, someone gonna live there? I don't know.
So we can live with the compact car percentage?
Well, I was gonna say, if you could possibly reduce, but if you're reducing some of the other trouble parking spaces, you couldn't really reduce and then increase a few extra sizes, so. Yeah, I mean, it's for overnight, so, but I do understand what you're saying about if the building gets sold, the property gets sold. You know, I, I guess from a process standpoint, is that, Kristen, something the buyer would have to live by all the-
Yes.
Everything in the beauty?
It depends with the land, it is in effect unless, if it is approved. Unless they pay before you for amendments, there are some minor modifications they can make with just staff approval, but anything like that would definitely be backed to planning commission and control. Alright, so we could live with the compact car percentage?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Balcony projections. Did we wanna see them, is that what I remember, somebody?
Yeah, I think it would be good to see a rendering of that, I mean, I don't know, I, I'm trying to think of last time I walked under an eight-foot balcony.
It does feel low.
Was the eight foot on the backside?
Facing Coolidge.
I thought, wasn't that, I thought the plans set showed it at twelve feet. At least the plans I was looking at.
No, it's at eight feet in height.
On Coolidge?
On Coolidge, yeah. Eight feet above the grade.
Okay.
So this is in relation to your previous comment, Commissioner Dolan, about the sheet A three-one?
Yeah, and Commissioner Woods added the, the canopy projection.
Yes, okay.
Which, I concur with that.
I guess what's showing on the elevation plan sheets then?
Can we offer a comment on the balcony height?
Yes.
The, the parking, the roof in the parking area is twelve feet high. The first floor is gonna be on top of that. It's not gonna drop down.
Yeah.
We're not cantilevering down. We have a twelve-foot-high parking garage that this building sits on top of. So you're not gonna count how, why it's shown or depicted the way it is. Hunter, if you wanna offer some comment, but we're gonna be coming out from the first floor, which is not gonna be exactly on top of the parking track, it's gonna be above that. I think it was matter of scaling it properly from our perspective for you to see it better.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was reading, um, the building be west elevation at least, right, second floor elevation twelve feet? So the balcony would be at twelve feet.
Okay.
The bottom, the bel, bottom of the balcony is at twelve feet, cause this looks like the top of the balcony slab is at twelve feet.
The bottom of the balcony will be at twelve feet, the top of the slab is above that. And there are renderings in the packet towards the end that show views going down the Coolidge, uh, the Coolidge Highway, um, on the sidewalk.
Okay, so what, what was the eight feet then?
Um, I believe there's other projections, some canopies and stuff that were at eight feet.
Is that the one in the back?
For those entries.
But not the balconies.
But not the balconies.
So it might've been all the, the overhang or the, um, canopies over the entrances?
Yes, yes.
Kristen, can you pull up A, A three-point-one?
Yes.
I had the public packet open, but if you give me a second, I'm gonna actually go to the drive, cause I think that'll give us a better look.
It's like the fourteenth page.
Thank you.
PDF page.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
This page?
Uh, the one before, right.
The one before it?
Yeah, the elevation.
And then can you, if you could zoom in, sorry.
To, to which, uh, give me a number.
Um, and if you could go to, uh, section C, building A, north elevation. It's, um, kinda middle right.
They're numbered, what's the number?
Six.
Six.
Oh, okay, right there.
And if you zoom up on six a little bit more, sorry, my eyesight sucks even though I got glasses. You can see the line going across for twelve feet.
Yes, I'm trying to get it there.
Scroll away across, you can see that the, the bottom, as I understand, at the bottom of that canopy on the, on the right side is below that.
So are you referring to this right here?
I'm referring to that, but, no.
I see.
Take the, take, take the twelve feet down, um, yeah.
But you, you need eleven feet.
It also shows in four.
Well, it required to get the-
But you said it was twelve feet, is it twelve feet or is it less than that?
It looks to me like it's twelve feet to the balcony.
To the balcony?
To the floor of the balcony.
Correct, yeah.
And it may have structure supporting it, like a cantilever.
Yeah.
Out that may be below that, sure.
That's what I'm clarifying, because I asked if it was twelve feet to the bottom or the top, and you said to, to the bottom. So it is twelve feet to the top.
Twelve feet to the-
The top of the porch.
To the deck.
To the deck, okay.
And then there'll be a cantilever, either some metal structure to hold it up or-
That is a better view right there, I think that, uh, Michelle just pointed out this, it actually has the measurement on it for the south elevation, so you can see that.
So is that a concern any further?
It's what, eleven and a half?
We were discussing, it's not necessarily a concern, but-
I think there was some conversation as to whether it was eight or twelve, right?
I think it's over the doors.
Can you go up to number eight?
Nine and a half, isn't it, up the garage door?
I guess so.
What was that?
Go back to number four.
Okay.
Right there is the measurement, nine and a half.
That's the garage door.
Right, but if you follow it to the left, it's the bottom, correct?
So if you follow this measuring over, it's right there.
Yeah, but those lines aren't lining up. If you zoom in, so it's-
It'd be just, it'd be just shy, it'd probably turn, it'd be, if it's to scale, if it's to scale, it might not be to scale.
So clearly, we need some clarification in plans as to exactly how high that balcony is, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the code require, what's height, that's required?
Uh, eleven is required?
Yes.
And that-
Is that to the bottom, correct?
Above the sidewalk, eleven feet above the sidewalk.
Of clearance.
Eleven feet of clearance.
Yes, yes.
Running and hitting it.
Right.
So we could do two, I'm, I'm sure that we don't need a, a twelve-inch I-beam coming out.
Probably not.
Right, so we can accommodate that to get it above eleven-six, so taking into account, we do that, or we strap it from the top and anchor it back to the building, you've seen suspended, we'd have zero, we'd have twelve clear. So if your, if your direction is, make sure we've got at least eleven feet clear, we'll come back with a cutout and show you exactly how those balconies will hang. If you make this subject to that sort of spe, you know, specific direction, well, we'll be happy to come back to you and show you how we'll comply. But again, but to start over and go through a whole new process might be, we'll be here for this time next year again. So if you can be clear on what you want, we'll, we'll, we'll detail it for you. Or we'll make it, you can make your approval subject to, and then leave it to staff to verify everything once we get architectural drawings done. What we haven't done is come up with a full set of architectural drawings. So some of this is just CAD CAM drawings, some of the things may be bulkier than they need to be because we haven't gone to full-scale architectural, which is, you're getting into hundreds of thousands of dollars at that point, so now you're, we don't wanna approve. So if we need some cutouts on heights, um, and more landscape-
And distance to the property lines.
Happy to do that. That, that's clarity, we, we can go back and do that without much trouble. And we'd appreciate it as, for you to be as specific as you can to get us over the top here.
I think anything you can do to show us the relationship of the building to the, my concern is with adjacent residential neighbors. I think perhaps there's others that are more concerned with the relationship of the building to Coolidge. Um, but my perspective is with the neighbors.
So we're at least, we're twenty feet off the back wall.
Understood, I'd love to see that on the plan.
I think we have renderings in here that do detail out the walkways around the building, if you go to the plans, or Hunter, what page was that, Ben?
Uh, just tell me, tell me what it's done.
Actually, if you go back to that same page, that section number five has the two property lines, um, to the east and west.
Where's five?
It does, but it's only got, if, if that's the, that's the one in the middle with, without the shading of the building wall? Is that five?
Yeah, the section of the building, on the left-hand side of the page.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, without the exterior.
Scroll up. Yeah, see, I, I love that, um, I would just love some dimensions, and I, the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the two buildings, it's different in relationship to the property line, the residential property line, right?
Did we still stagger the north and south building?
Very minimally.
Okay, so they're-
But maybe a foot.
Initially, we were setting back further.
Okay.
We, we more, we more true them up without the bridge.
Okay.
So we did have an offset to create some, uh, cascade effect to the building. We've treed it up, it's pretty close to the line, I mean, it's, you won't see a big drop back in the building. So they're gonna be set equidistant on both sides of, of Columbia, or very close to it.
Are they? Cause they look different on-
Yeah.
They look different on your landscape.
They are slightly different, like we stated in the presentation, the building setback to the single-family residential is twenty feet on the north building and nineteen or eighteen on that southern building, and that is dimensioned on the floor, on the first floor plan.
So twenty versus nineteen, eighteen or nineteen?
Yes.
It's more than a one or two feet on this plan. I'm, I'm looking at the landscape plan and you show, well, hang on, let me look at, which plan is it that shows the A one-point-one?
A one-one.
Where on the north building, it is very clearly labeled line of floor above, it's A one-point-one.
And now tell me where you want me to go.
Um, if you just zoom in on the north building, actually, I can see it from here, there's text that says line of floor above. Right there, that's the east building wall, right?
Oh, right here, yeah.
Is that correct, that, I'm reading that correctly, that's the east-facing building wall?
Yes.
Okay, and then if you go to the, to the south's building, I don't see it labeled, but I believe it is the hidden line that, you know, I guess that would be, if, if you were to come back, if you could make use of some color on your PDF, that would be really helpful to see where, where that line is of the building up above. So we could see where the canopies are and such, if you know what I mean? Cause I think that canopy kind of pokes out, oh, I, I just saw it.
There's something that says line of canopy.
Yeah, there it is, I just saw it, I didn't see it before when I was looking at my paper, hard copy. It's, it's right underneath the vehicle, or, is that the vehicle?
Oh, right there, line of canopy above.
And see how the canopy goes up? It's, it's hard to see where, there's a lot of lines that are-
So what's your concern with that?
I just, it, it would be, if you were to come back, I would like it's a little bit more clear where the building limits are. Cause you just said that it was twenty feet versus eighteen or nineteen, but that is, if one's eighteen or nineteen, the other one is not twenty. And that would probably help your case if you could say, hey, this one is this, this is the dimension, this is where the line is, this is what it looks like on the section.
If we're looking at the first floor, a, a lot of those dimensions were given in the Carlisle-Wartman response. We can definitely go back and clarify on some of these as a condition. But many of those dimensions are given there.
I'm assuming that's the building, right?
Yeah, it's the, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, all those bubbles right there indicate all the dimensions.
So it shows twenty-one point five to the property line in this bubble.
That's for the first floor.
That's the building, that's, that dimension is to the building wall, and then the hidden line is the canopy or the overhang?
There's the overhang above.
The overhang, okay.
It's twenty-one five is what it shows.
Commissioner Patterson just suggested the, or council member Patterson.
There, you can kinda see the layout a little bit, is that what you're asking for, Commissioner?
Yeah, but it'd be nice to see in reference to the parking and the property line.
But that's the floor plan, you know?
Yeah, right, I know. I'm only one person, and this is only if it comes back.
It's a good point, but you're showing twenty-one point five feet off the back wall. If you go to the right, if you slide that way, that bubble in the center shows twenty-one point five to property line.
To the, from the building wall to the property line, but that hidden line, that's just up a little bit, that's the overhang of the building?
Yes, and there's a dimension-
What is that hidden line?
In that same bubble, that hi, that hidden line is the bel, the line of the balcony is the line of the projection on the upper floors.
Okay.
The property, from the property line to that usually wall is twenty-one fi, twenty-one foot five, that projection is two foot seven.
Okay, so your, your distance from your overhang, um, to the property line is twenty-one feet, five inches minus two feet, seven inches, whatever that math is. Okay. And then on the north side, you are, there's some text that says line of overhang slash balconies above thirty-one feet, ten and five eights. That's very specific from the property line. And then, okay, and then it's thirty-five feet. See, I think that would, I think that would help your, um, I think that would help your case to, to show that a little bit more clearer.
We can't, we can't put every, can't do three-dimensional on every-
No, 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 no.
Sidelines are called out.
I'm, I'm talking about on the, on the sections, I'm, I'm talking about on the sections showing the property lines just like you did on section five, but show them on all of the other sections that are applicable, okay? Um, and then that, for what it's worth, I would make that color, you know, red or something, so it stands out, so you can see what it, what it looks like. If you, if you were to come back.
So, okay, but what we have here complies, what we're submitting complies with our super regard setback.
I'm just trying to understand what, how it, how it looks in relationship to the neighbors, to the adjacent residential.
Okay, but again, you're not questioning whether we're complying here.
Not questioning the setback.
You just want a better picture of it.
I'd like a better picture because it's, it's a little convoluted, what's, you know, what's an overhang, the canopies, and how far away you actually are from the property line.
Can we do that subject to? Or are you sending us home to come back again?
I'm just one person.
I'm, I'm just, I wanna be clear, because I'd like to come to some conclusion this evening as to how we're proceeding or not. And if there's specific things you want us to prove out, we're happy to do that. But that, again, it gets into more architectural, more time, more money, we're happy to do it if we know we're moving ahead based on some assumptions on your part, things we, we understand, cause we're living with the plans. But if you want us to detail further out where the, where the overhangs are on the balconies, we'll get, we'll do some cutouts. If you wanna see a more three-dimensional photo or picture or drawing of how the building looks to the neighbors, we can do that, but again, we're within compliant, we're, we're compliant, we're happy to add more color to it, but- we can do that, but again, we're within compliant, we're, we're compliant. We're happy to add more color to it, but I don't know if it changes the decision that would ultimately be made or not.
I would like to see, I would like to see that for clarification. Now, the other part of that item is the mass of the building and how that looks. Um, can we do that with an isometric view? Maybe? Um, from what I've seen, I feel that it's a large square, white building, brick building.
Can you notice some of the elevations?
Sure.
It's not a square building. I mean, it's, it's got 90-degree angles, there's no question, on all the corners. It's, it's square, but you've got depth on the balconies, you've got the, the first floor with the metal, um, screening, which adds texture and color. You've got landscaping all around the front of the building. You go up a floor, you've got balconies protr- protruding out, which give depth that's not flat. Then you have windows, right? Then you go up a floor, you got the same thing. You've got undulating balconies coming out. Then you go to the mansard and it's setback.
I think my, my hangup is with, when we talked about the master plan, having the development along corridors step down to the residential. Now, um, I was not at the last meeting in October. Um, to be honest, I probably would have voted no for it because I did not like the bridge. I am happy you, you took the bridge out. But I'm not happy that you made the, the, the fourth floor, you extended it essentially, where it was just a roof deck.
We didn't extend it.
You didn't extend it?
It's the same footprint.
The, the fourth floor is the same?
All we did was instead of having roof, two, a two-story unit.
It's covered, it's covered.
Um, yeah, the mass.
No, it's, we have not changed the mass. What we did is instead of having rooftops, two-story units, we have two one-story units without a walkout on the roof. That's in fact what happened. We're in the same building envelope as we were before. We've just taken two-story units and made them one-story units.
Those look different to me.
Okay.
It's the same square footage, sure, but it's.
It's the same footprint.
You got.
It's the same height.
That, and here you had this. Right.
I mean, it'll prove itself out. It's the same footprint.
I agree.
It's the same di- height.
It's, on one side it is, but it.
Instead of having a two-story apartment, we have two one-story apartments. That's, that's it, with no rooftop. We've taken the rooftops out, which was part of someone's concern.
Forty feet to the mid-rise, that's 40 feet. You had 40 feet for a section of it before.
Like a smidge, yeah.
And then now you have 40 feet across almost the entire cross-section.
But it's setback inside of the building envelope. We just basically have a roof line into your, well, the interior height of the ceilings has to be at least, I think we're putting nine-foot ceilings or 10-foot ceilings in. So instead of just having dead space between the deck and the ceilings, we have full wide-open units inside the same building envelope.
Could you go back to just having the one, was that a full unit? Was that a bedroom unit on the top floor in the previous?
Yes, and a walkout on the roof.
So you only added both sides of the, the, of the units because you got rid of, um, what, four units over the bridge?
We eliminated four on the bridge.
Okay.
And then we basically put floors, we just put a fourth floor of full units as opposed to just the walkouts, which were only taking up a portion of that airspace above the unit, if that makes sense.
You got the same number of units?
Exact same count.
Yeah, you have the same number, and they've always been studio or one-bedroom?
Correct. We had some two-bedrooms before. We eliminated those.
You had some two-bedroom before.
Two or three of them. I'm not sure where they were, but.
Help me, help me underst- the math's not mathing in my head. It could be me. Um, you got rid, rid of how many units above the bridge?
Four.
You got rid of four units above the bridge.
Correct.
And you've added how many units with extending the fourth floor across the length of both buildings?
Yeah, the counts.
They're in the packet, but for the total counts, the none of the counts have changed. To accommodate removal of the bridge and access to both buildings adequately for ADA accessibility and just overall circulation, some u- some of the floors were redistributed, but the total number of 57 units is the same.
And the unit sizes are still between 600 and 1300 square feet is the range.
And is that what they were in the last version?
Yes.
I think I've talked enough, so.
I mean, I agree. I, I like the visualness of the last version.
I like, I didn't mind the roof on the top. I didn't like the bridge, but I liked the, I, I didn't mind the roof. I, I could understand maybe some concerns, but I felt like it was setback enough that I could live with it and, yeah.
It feels less massive.
And remember, we pulled the mechanical away from the edge of the building to the center of the building. So I guess the question I have is, is three, which way does three go? If you're three and three, which side carries the day on the vote?
It means neither side carries the vote. It means nothing can pass.
Unless we modify your thinking on the landscaping.
Anything else that you wanted, um, for clarification, if you wanted to see?
No, I mean, I think the, um, I think putting a condition on the landscaping part, I think that's helpful. That kind of, um, adding that permeable path, um, increasing the amount of greenage there. I think that kind of helps me with the landscaping issue.
Would that change you today?
Yes.
Alright, so that means you'd be.
What conditions would you have? Let's, let's do it.
So as, as you are, I'm, for your name, I'm sorry.
The condition that he said before about changing.
Sidewalk to the permeable, was it geystone, gravelstone?
Uh, it'd be a cr-.
It would be a crushed gravel that meets ADA compliance for travel.
Okay, good. And then what was the other?
Uh, removing the one southernmost patio seating area. We'll turn that into a lawn or maybe a permeable grass paver kind of a thing. Still maybe make it seating, but remove the concrete, make it some sort of permeable material.
Okay, so that's recognizable benefits. Does that change your feeling on it?
I could, I could be a yes on that one.
I could feel okay too. Alright, so we have our recognizable benefits.
The same as before.
Two, four and five.
Probably.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two, four and five. Get out there.
Did it take us longer this time or?
Yeah.
Took longer.
It's my fault, sorry.
And so far, I've noted adding clearance dimensions and rear setbacks labeled better as additions to the plans that can be administratively approved.
You think, right?
I, I mean.
I guess, Lisa, what, what about the parking? Like, we talked about it, but I don't think we really discussed it with the applicant.
Just in my notes, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the problem parking there, for lack of a better word, stay or not stay or change the tandem or not change the tandem? I wasn't clear on that.
So I loved the idea, right, of eliminating that one, right? So that's like a dumpster one, right? Um, I still think that's a little wonky trying to get the, like, dumpster in and out backwards, but hopefully that's a movie hours of the morning where no one's actually walking.
Yeah, I mean, that does happen all the time and like royal.
And then changing those others to tandem that they access. This way, I feel much more comfortable with that.
I would ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Ask the applicant then if they're.
How do you feel about that?
Willing to do that.
We think it's a good idea.
What about the two in the north parking lot?
Those I feel like absolutely have to go. I do not agree with people pulling over sidewalks.
So I would prefer.
Do you know which ones?
So you're, yeah, you're talking about the two that theoretically would ba- not theoretically, would back out onto Cambridge. We can go to that site.
On the Columbia.
Yeah, we've, if you're okay with that, with two less spots, that gives us more stacking for snow. Right? So we could clean that up and green it up a little bit. If you're good eliminate, we, we want to get the parking spaces here best we could, but if you're, I think we still follow 133 if you eliminate those. So I think we're going to be real close to fine. So yeah, we'll take those out if that's, specifically, you're talking about which one? So Joe can draw it. There's really only one that backs out.
It's the northbound, so it's the ingress off of Columbia.
Yeah, and the other one.
Which one? Where?
Right in the middle, yep.
Both of those.
So it looked like Azos would be backing up, they'd be backing up.
Are you concerned with the one on the northwest corner? So is that far enough away from the walk?
That looks far enough away from me.
I agree. I think that is far enough away from the walk. Okay.
So we eliminate those two and then the, the deep one next to the dumpster. Well, still, do we pave that or, so we're eliminating the one up next to the dumpster. We'll need to pave part of that for backup radius.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll maybe make the park slightly bigger or keep that for snow.
I mean, I think it's wise to keep it, you're going to have to move snow there.
I'd rather, I'd rather pave it and keep it for snow to pile on.
I mean, you're going to have to be able to put snow from there.
That's fine. Alright, we'll, we'll keep it paved and we can play with the site layout while we're there, but we want to green it up as much as we can too.
Right.
And that neighbor's going to have a landscape wall on their side. He's, he's asked for a credit. So that'll be a full green wall on his side of the property as is. Okay, we can live with that.
So this is three less spots.
Three less spots.
It would be three.
Three less spots and, um, six more tandem spots?
No, I mean, it, it's just three li- those are turning, some of, those would turn, those three would turn, just turn into a tandem spot. They're not lost or gained, they're just.
Right, yeah, be, well, I should say three spots that are tandem spots for total six. Yeah, and then three spots that would be eliminated. Math. I was under the understanding there'd be no math tonight.
You'll still have the parking space. You just, the count will go down three, but we'll have enough, that'll still be paid for parking in those three areas.
I'm sorry.
Those three spots would still be paved. They'd be deeper. You're only losing a count of three.
I agree.
Technically, three spots. Okay, that's cool.
So, I guess so that easterly entrance would be more just for garbage collection and like maintenance or utility or something, access?
I mean, you have to get a garbage truck to there and I don't know that you can get it from the front, so.
That'll help. That'll help with traversing the truck in and out of there. I'm, I'm fine with it. I think, it's a, it's a good suggestion, I think. We're trying to stay at 80. We're kind of hung up on that, but if you're okay with a slight reduction, it will make the, the ingress and egress of the truck easier. And if, it'll just make it easier for the trash hauling.
And a point of reference, I would advise that you, that the tenants know that there is no overnight parking in Berkeley because I know when we talked about the parking ordinance, there was a surprisingly large number of people that did not realize that when they bought a house in Berkeley.
Oh, I, I think everybody struggles with that, but then they hold it deeply and dearly. It's crazy how like.
I'm a huge.
Oh, I don't, people get over it, but no, they like, they come in hordes loving their no overnight parking.
I'm in that camp. I'm very happy there's no overnight parking on the streets.
It's easier for snow plowing and cleaning roads and everything else.
It doesn't look so trashy.
Agreed.
Alright, so, um, I guess my next question is, as we're hashing through some of these, Michael Shiloh, is there anything else you wanted to see stuff to, right? So do you want to see it back again?
I'm one vote. If it comes back again, I'd love to see it, but I'm one vote and I don't know if, if, I don't know where we are with our votes. Let's put it that way.
Are you talking about the, the renderings of the overhang or?
The sections with relationship to the property lines.
And the changes and whatever.
Yeah.
You know, even if the motion passed, then we'll provide you that. We'll just, we'll send it to Kristen to distribute so you can feel for it. But we're, we're well within compliance doing it the way we are. So if you voted in favor of it, or, well, if you're in favor, we still provide you that detail.
We can make, make that as a condition.
Happy to do that.
Which seems like a more ideal solution since it's already in compliance.
Yeah, but it would help with the, the decision of whether or not the building is massive feeling or not. Right now, I'm, my opinion is that the, the building feels large and ginormous. And maybe if I saw that, maybe I'd feel differently about it. So making it a condition in my mind, would it steer me towards a yes vote, I guess.
I, I mean, I've always had a problem with how the, how it feels, um, because it feels massive. And I get that there are little things, but they're too little to make the difference to the eye and to make it feel less imposing. Which is why I keep harping on it every time. But I don't think there's any plans to change that, right?
No. We can't, we can't, the size is, the scale is the scale. We are, account, we're doing our best to keep it off the neighbors. Uh, we could go to 10 feet. I mean, we could go right and be really hovering at 40 feet above and we, we push the building forward intentionally. Plus, we pick up that parking in the park there. So I don't think we can change that at all, the dimensions or the, the rear yard setbacks. And we can't go to three floors. So I would say that won't change.
And I, I don't know if this would help for you. If, if there was something architecturally to make it feel less overwhelming? Or is for you, is it just straight up the se- the size?
There could be some architecturally that would make it feel.
You know, the mansard roof, if you, if you recall the, um, the Willetts Building in Birmingham, downtown above, um, it's an apartment building, and they have a mansard roof on the top floor and it, it's beautiful. It's set, it's set, and that's what we're proposing. It steps back. It, it, it sort of gracefully backs into the building. And the balconies don't come out over the building. They're, they're set within the footprint of the unit. So they still have an open space and they have windows going in, but you're not looking up 40 feet. You're looking at 34 feet top end. And then the building drop slopes back toward the center. So I think when we, it would be good for us to detail more of the mansard to show you what we can do there, but that, that can go a long way towards softening the mass of it, the mass feeling. We didn't go into a lot of detail on the mansard roof, but I think we can provide you, uh, some clarity on what that looks like. The brick is, it's a nice brick. It's not white. It's, it's a creamy off-white and it's got some, it's a high caliber brick. Uh, the bronze, I don't know if you've seen this. These are the finishes. I'm happy to share with you.
Can we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And don't get me wrong, I'm an artist, right? It's a hard pill to swallow and somebody is like, this does not meet my vision. I totally get it.
And, and I think that's, I think part of that feeling of massiveness has to do with the color.
For sure.
I, I, I think that and, you know, and I, like I said, I can appreciate good architectural design and everything. I'm just saying, in that space where everything is carefully calculated to get
I think these are larger bricks than we actually are using.
As much profit out of it as possible. It's, you know, it's, it just, it does that, that color just really stands out.
There's a reason why you paint a small room white or green, right? Because it makes it look bigger. Same principle applies with the building.
Well, I'll tell you this, we'll, we will, and I won't, it can be a condition, right? But we will take another look at the color of the brick. I'd be happy to do that and look at some designs. We want people to look at the building and want to live there. So we'll scale it out a little more on our, our time as we get closer to final design. You know, we can soften it, we will. I, I hear loud and clear, I think we're demonstrating to you that we're listening. And we'll take, take that into strong consideration and we're not married to white brick. Okay, there's no. Okay, there's no, we haven't bought the brick yet, so that can be, we can modify that. And maybe accent it a little differently.
For what it's worth, I like the white.
Right.
I think a lot of the new houses that are built are with the black and white style now and they're huge looking and it's, looks, looks like, it looks like what it is now, yeah, that's.
We try not to go too modern and, or too old school either. We want to be somewhere in between, more, more of a contemporary design. Which is what Peter had in mind when they designed the building, so. And they've done a number, that, that's what they do, so they're trying to fit it to the size and the character of the area. But, the character there is what it is today. As you do your new master plan, there's gonna be other developments following this one in the area and they're not all gonna look like Berkeley does today. You're in a transition. And, you know, choice of colors is gonna be subject to what the designers want to do. That's just, you're in the path of development, that's where this is, this is headed.
And you said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, like, you know, looking down Coolidge from eleven mile, you have CVS and Durst. You have the bank. I, I mean, it will change based on there just being a comparable sized building as you go, as you're driving north. Because it is, it's, it's, gets built up with these vacant properties. You have this, you're flanked on both sides. Basically by.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, you know, that, that's gonna be what's gonna happen through here essentially.
I'm not worried about change, I just want to make sure it's changed in, in the right direction. That's, will complement the city and, you know, the residents are comfortable with.
It really benefit, benefit you in the best way, right? We want people to love your building too.
Well, you know, we, keep in mind, we own the property across the street and all around it, so we want to build a building that's attractive. And doesn't deter from the, that, that corner of Coolidge either, right? So. Well, uh, we'll take another look at it, I assure you that. Uh, we may not change it, but I guarantee you we'll look at it. And we can soften it, we'll do that. I hear loud and clear.
I guess it definitely stands out, looking at all the buildings on Coolidge.
That it does.
So I guess it's kind of a weird juxtaposition of, do you want it to blend in with everything or do you want it to look architecturally different that it stands out?
Our design guidelines really talk, and, and, and it's not even, it's about that feeling of massiveness as you're walking as a pedestrian.
Sure.
We don't want buildings that feel like they're moving over you because it's not comfy and, and warm in a small downtown. So there's a whole chapter on how to make it.
Yeah.
It's not the downtown though, right?
Yeah.
And it's our, it's our.
It's the gateway.
All of it is covered with our downtown design guidelines.
Yeah.
Eric, we talked about this.
I don't know if I was here for that, but I mean, okay.
It's a lo, it's a long, it's a great read.
Okay.
It's long.
I can resend them out to everyone. I can resend them out to everyone.
And they're in the drive, aren't they?
I think so. It is a good read, I would recommend taking a look.
Alright, so, front setback, are we cool?
Yep.
Yep.
Anyone not cool? Use of multifamily on the first floor, are we all cool?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Anyone not cool? Balcony projections, do we need a rendering or are we okay on them?
I'm fine with that.
We can make the condition that they need to be eleven feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd be okay with that.
Well, they're not asking for a variance on that, right? So they have to meet the minimum.
I mean, it is actually one of the things that was called out that we had to make a decision on.
Right, but I think when we looked at the plan set, I don't think.
The projection.
The projection, not the clearance. Not the vertical clearance.
Not the vertical clearance, the projection.
That, that, that's ma, it would have to be ma, like.
Far out, right?
That'd be a building, building code thing.
Correct.
I think it was Commissioner Woods brought up, I think you saw somewhere it said eight feet.
Yeah, that's.
And that's what brought the conversation to light.
Is it the understanding of the city that it's eight feet or eleven feet?
So, that was talking about projections, right, Michelle? Not necessarily the bottom of the balcony?
There was a previous plan submission that had a different number on there, but I'm glad that you're asking for clarity because it wasn't listed at all on the latest site plan submission.
Alright, so it has to be at least eleven feet up?
Well, you should, it should.
And then it was too far out, right? That's what we needed the agreement on?
Right, it's not meant to go more than three feet into the setback.
Okay.
We should say, is, are we sure it's eleven or just say it needs to meet the, whatever the ordinance?
That, that's the requirement, yes.
Okay, okay.
Are we okay on the projection being bigger than it's allowed?
Into the right of way?
Yes.
Yes.
Any notes?
What, sorry, what was the projection at, again?
Projection was?
This is on Coolidge only.
It's like you're less than two feet from the sidewalk.
Okay.
But, but assuming eleven feet up, correct?
Assuming eleven feet up, they're gonna be two feet into the sidewalk.
Buffed.
Back from sidewalk, not in the right of way.
Two feet away from the sidewalk, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that then.
Yep.
Yeah, just under two feet from the property line.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Um. Compact car usage, we were okay, correct?
Yep.
Everyone, parking, so when we take out those three, we are at?
Seventy-seven.
Huh?
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
And that is, how many?
One point three five.
One point three five.
Are we okay with parking being one point three five? And we'll just make sure that it's assigned?
As long as it's assigned.
Mm-hmm, correct.
For clarification, you want all spaces assigned, is that correct?
Yes.
Not just the tandems?
That, you said all of them are assigned.
So, I, point, just to clarify, there's fifty-seven units. I guess we'd assign it if you have two or more cars. If you only have one car, we'll label fifty-seven parking spaces to, to the unit. If you're a tandem, we'll give you two in a row. If you have one car and you're in unit forty-one, you'll park in space forty-one.
Which is essentially assigned.
So you're assigning all.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be specific to the, to the unit number. But there's eighty, well, seventy-seven spaces, so we're gonna have an extra twenty that I don't think we have to, to assign if they don't have two cars.
Right.
So if you have two cars, we'll assign you two spaces. If you have one car, we'll assign you one space. If you have a visitor, the, we can't tie up all eighty because you're gonna have visitors that may come today for unit forty and tomorrow for thirty-two.
Everyone that needs one will have one.
Everyone that, everyone has, if you have one car, you get one spot. If you have two cars, if there's room, you got two spots.
Every car will have an assigned spot.
And then if you're over.
Every resident's car.
You got, you're the one that has to deal with it because you'll have people mad at you.
How do you want that, how do you want that defined?
Just all parking spaces, um, or all units will have at least one assigned parking space.
There you go.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, because there is the, the.
The residents will like that anyway.
Yeah, the guest spaces that were labeled, those would stay guest spaces, right?
Yeah, the, the exterior, along the back, the outside parking, I imagine we're gonna put all the guest parking under the building.
Yeah.
And then the guest parking will probably be that back wall that's not covered.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
If that makes sense.
So, I guess, how would that be enforced if someone decides to leave their car there for?
That's for them.
Well, we can tow, we can tow vehicles if your car is left over in a certain period of time or you're taking too many spaces. Though, it's, it's typical on an apartment building that they would register their license plate and make a model of their car.
Yeah, you have to register.
With their lease. That's pretty typical. If we have a problem, we're gonna know it. If it's not a problem, no, there's not, yeah, I'm not looking for trouble, but.
And if someone's parking in someone's spot, you'll probably hear about it.
They'll, I think it'll self-police itself.
Now, if, let's say this isn't enough parking and.
Everyone's parking on the street.
Well, and you have to do a shared parking or something like that. Because it's a PUD, does it have to come back to us? Or to council?
So, since this is a PUD, it would get, if it were approved, approved with the conditions that you guys, similar, you know, similar to what you're talking about, those would be outlined in the agreement. But there wouldn't be a mechanism where we would say, staff would say, oh, it looks like maybe we were wrong, you don't have enough parking, now it has to come back.
No, I mean, if there was like a shared parking.
Like if they wanted to say, we feel like we have a problem, we want to encumber one of our other properties with a shared parking agreement. Yes, I assume it would be pretty easily approved.
I mean, I would too. I'm just saying like, you know.
Yes, that's a change that would come back.
There's a likelihood we'll continue to acquire property around it. And if we do, it would, we would take into account what we could build on that adjacent lot. And we have to be back here anyway.
And would you accor, would, would, would you or could you encourage people to park in the, the lots that you have versus the street?
For guest parking?
For guest parking, yeah.
I think that's just gonna take, people park in our lots from the Ivy now. Without encouraging them. So I think that's gonna naturally happen.
I mean, that's like, people at your house, like, they park on the street.
I know.
Take a drive-by on Sunday during church services, our, our parking lots, an adjacent lot.
Super concerned about it because at night, you can't park in the street.
Right.
Right.
Um, and I think most people that are gonna have guests are probably gonna be spending the night.
That would be my guess.
So, I think maybe that might resolve itself, but.
Commissioner Don, I think you're correct. I think people will just find a, a warm parking spot off the street somewhere. And it's gonna take care of itself and we're really not gonna care. But, I don't know how I encourage them to park. I mean, they might park at CVS. Overnight. I mean, who, there's no telling. There's a lot of parking lots around that property, not just ours, right, so.
Okay, so. Is there anything that I missed? That needs to be addressed? I have the landscaping, crush jam, gravel, removing the concrete pad, adding grass or grass pavers. Uh, remove dumpster parking and make it just dumpster parking, dumpster stopping. Um, and removing the two parking spaces north of Columbia on the north building. Make the other three problem areas tandem parking in the south building. Sending us the updated plans?
Sure.
Can I ask a clarification question on that? So, how would the planning commission want to see, see that? Because if you, if you move to approve or recommend approval, like at the next meeting, do we, do I, the staff person, bring them along?
That's a good question. I guess I don't necessarily, if, if, say for instance, we vote to approve with these conditions, I don't need to see that plan. They don't need to do the work, I don't need to see it.
Because you'll know it's.
Because I know, it's already approved and I can't do anything about it anyways.
Right, the condition is.
Well, it'll be within your condition, so, yeah.
So, the condition is the staff.
It, it could be a condition that, um, they be provided prior to council consideration, if that makes you feel better.
That's very good. That's a good, good job.
I guess, so that leads me to my question. Is the intention to make these changes before going to council or going to council with the recommendation of these changes?
That is a question for you all. You could make a mo, motion to recommend with these changes listed. You could make a motion to postpone. It wouldn't be based on these conditions because I don't think you'd have a passing vote necessarily. But, it would be very clear direction for the applicant if you were to say motion to postpone with consideration given to the following items. So those would really be your two paths. To recommend approval, subject to these conditions and have staff and council make sure that they've been adequately met. Or to postpone with specific direction regarding these items.
But then it would just go to council. I mean, they wouldn't, they wouldn't make any of those changes first, right? They, they would go to council with our recommendations?
As a condition, you could say. Yes, it could go to council with your, with your recommendations listed and council could say, hey, we're fine with staff checking these two. Or alternatively, you could put it in your, um, motion that you would like that additional sheet provided prior to the council meeting. And you can say, with, um, I, I wouldn't, I would say, if you were gonna make a motion to recommend approval and want council to be able to see these changes, I wouldn't necessarily have them change every single sheet. I would have them change maybe the landscape plan. To show the landscape changes and they could also show the parking changes on that particular sheet. So it'd be one sheet to council saying, this is what planning commission wanted to see. Here we're showing you that it works. Particularly, I think there's some ambiguity with regard to the landscape area and the permeable path that would probably be worth council seeing. So there's, there's a couple different ways then, that, that you could do it. Really, you're only talking about the landscape area and the parking changes. The other things that you're talking about aren't necessarily plan changes, the assigned parking, consideration of the architectural softening, I mean, those aren't necessarily on the hard plan, so.
Sure.
It's up to the commission what they feel most comfortable with.
Kristen, there's two points to the council. We have to go before, for approval and then back for the PUD.
Correct.
So we're being counse, in front of council twice.
Yep, yes.
Okay, so is there anything I forgot in all of that? Everybody feels like all of their concerns have been adequately addressed. Okay, so the second question is, do we want to see it again or do we want to pass it along?
Pass it along with conditions.
I would say pass it with the conditions.
Yeah, pass it along with conditions, yeah.
I know, I'm a little bit of a control freak and I'm like, oh, they want to see it, but I get it.
You're counting your votes, that's cool.
I mean, the.
It's okay to say you want to.
The, the, the conditions are gonna be spelled out for the city council, right? So, if there's, if there's anything that's not met or that's not included as a, a condition.
Would it feel better if you did like what Kristen said where they made, you know, like they took this sheet, right, and showed the changes?
To the city council?
To the city council.
Yeah, I, I, okay, I can get on board on that. It doesn't need to come back to us, but they should make the changes before they go see the city council for the first time.
Maybe you could phrase it like a representation of the changes that would appear throughout the plan set or something like that.
Perfect.
Good with that?
Please, yep.
Okay.
This is only the recommendation.
This is only a recommendation.
Yeah, however it doesn't.
So, in that, we found the recognizable benefits. We have our conditions, standards for approval. Have we found that they've all been met? Do I need to read them? Have we all perused them?
I think we're good.
Yeah, I think we've gotten there.
Me too.
Alright.
And you have the variances to the.
I, yeah, we, I mean, we've agreed on all of those, so we'll have to, someone wordy is gonna have to make this motion.
And then do we need to say all of the PUD contract items? Because the assigned parking is part of that.
Right, so all of the, we'll have to list all the conditions.
Yeah, you should list the conditions that you've been discussing, the recognizable benefits that you've all agreed to, and, um,
Variances.
Yes, so you could use the motion that you made last time, if, whoever's going to make a motion as a starter point.
Sorry.
It, it was in the staff report, I just copied and pasted it, so.
One thing with the variance for the compact space, because if we're reducing or allowing them to reduce the number of spaces, what would that be? Because it was from thirty percent to forty-seven point five from the variance request, so then are we?
We're getting.
I think there's less compact.
I know, it's super technical.
There's less.
That's something that we as a staff can like clean up percentages and things later. You guys don't need to worry about that.
Just wanted to make sure.
So. Who wants to make a motion? I have lots of notes I can have. I'm just gonna start picking some.
I can go ahead and do it, mo.
Okay.
I, I mean, I have my own notes, so I'm gonna start from this, okay, yes. Um. And I don't have pulled up the prior one, but that's okay. I'll just, just say, um, um, motion to approve PUD zero, one, two, three.
Recommend.
Yeah, I'll recommendation for approval for PUD zero, one, two, three, the Columbia. Finding that it meets three of the seven recognizable benefits for a PUD specifically items number two, four, and five.
Is that good? Do you need us to list them in real words?
If the, if the motion maker and seconder doesn't mind, I will probably, when I do the minutes, actually list them out.
Okay. Item two for meeting or exceeding landscaping, item four for providing open space, and item five for consolidation of properties. Um, we also. Oh gosh. Sorry. We find that the project has variances as noted. We find that the project has variances as noted, including a deficient, as noted in the car, in the staff memo and allowed a deficient front setback on Coolidge, a projection on Coolidge Highway, a deficient number of parking spaces from current ordinance standards, and an overage in the number of compact car spaces.
And we have to mention the use on the first floor too?
Oh, yep, and in a, a variance from an allowable first floor use of retail. We also, I guess, for recommendation of approval, subject this to conditions, including site plan improvements for clearance, vertical clearance dimensioning, as well as rear setbacks labeled, um, and increased in landscaping and permanent path on the, a permeable path on the south building. Okay, south building, and removal of three parking spots, two on the north building and one on the south building.
Can I offer one clarification? So Michelle helped me with this. The removal of the southeast parking spots closest, or the parking spots closest to the southeast entry on the north building.
Okay, removal of the parking spaces in the southeast entry closest to the building. For a total number of parking spaces of seventy-seven. That's what we're all thinking is that's, that's what it needs to be. So additionally, we would like see, like to recommend within the, is it the PUD contract?
Agreement.
PUD agreement that the proposer provide trees on Coolidge, landscaping agreements with neighbors, as well as, I guess, assigned parking for one spot, one spot per unit, minimum.
At least one assigned parking.
Are the, is there a requirement to have agreements with the neighbors for, or do a lot?
So the, the way that I think that that would be worded is that landscaping would be offered to the adjacent neighbors. Obviously, they wouldn't have to accept it.
I mean, and. Put a time limit on that? Like, I don't want, I don't want a neighbor three years from now being like, but it says right here in this agreement that, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, like if someone new moves in or something like that?
Or somebody said no, and then a year later decided yes, right? Like, there should be like a.
During construction.
During construction.
Because we have to build a wall and we have to landscape.
So that's fine, yeah.
Okay, and proposed landscape agreements with a reasonable timeframe to existing neighbors. I, it's probably already worded in the prior one.
It is, but we'll make sure, yeah.
The only thing I'll add is then making those other three spots tandem spots and closing off the.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. So in addition to the removal of the, of the single spot on the south building, a conversion of three single spots into three tandem parking spots?
Yeah. Um, did you note that the standards for approval in section one thirty-eight, five thirty-seven are met?
Oh, okay. We also find that approvals of one thirty-three, five thirty-seven, standards approval for site plan are also met.
And then do we do the council one yet? The condition for the plans for council before their meeting?
Okay, then, that one I didn't write down. That, that is a final, I guess this is a condition, right? This is a condition, final condition that specific site plan sheets referencing said conditions are changed, so the city council and staff can review them.
Could we change it to a representative sheet showing the proposed conditions? Because I don't know that we want them to go through and change sheets. I think one sheet could probably show the changes.
Okay, a representative sheet depicting the changes.
All right, did we get them all?
I think I got the benefits, the standards, the PUD items, the conditions. I mean, I got all four things.
Second.
Yes. Commissioner Bartis.
Yes.
Commissioner Donlan.
No.
Commissioner Stapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes five to one.
It took a while, but we got there.
I'll do the first and last item on the agenda. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, um, liaison reports. Do we have any? Are our brains too fragged for them?
I don't, I mean, I, I did not get to go to the chamber meeting, but I know they're planning for Art Bash and need volunteers. The latest I know.
Volunteers for what?
All of their events.
I went to the DDE meeting, but I think it was like the day after our last meeting, and it's all a blur now.
Yeah, there might have been a couple murals on there, but.
Right, a couple murals, the Boss Social District, some talking about pocket parks and funding.
What's the social district?
Uh, right now we have El Patio.
Amici's.
Amici's and Mongers who have applied for the social district. I don't remember what the boundaries are. Do you remember, Opie?
Yes, because I just walked it today to tell all the businesses that this is happening. So it's on Twelve Mile from Kipling to Tyler, and it also includes the municipal parking lots that are in the rear of those sections. And it will be, starting June seventh will be the first day. So you can get your drink to go in a special, it has to be in a special plastic cup, and you can carry it around. And the businesses that we talked to today, Caitlin Flohr, the communications director, and I went out, were really excited and receptive. So you could take your drink into businesses as long as they don't have anything posted on the door that says, please don't social drinks. Yeah, and almost everyone said yes, they would be happy to have drinks.
Is that like a done deal? I just know like the church there on Kipling in Wakefield, I think they, don't they usually host like AA meetings and stuff?
So we didn't go into the church. We went into the places we thought people would probably take their, like.
Their drinks?
Yeah, we didn't stroll into the doctor's office.
Yes, it is a done deal.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I'm excited, like.
Me too.
In twenty twenty, I was in Luddington, and it was one of the best things about like vacationing during COVID was that I could just like.
Definitely sounds great for vacationing. Interesting that there was no backlash from people that live right there, but again, I'm not, I.
I think it was a slow transition with like ladies' night. There was, you know, always some free-flowing wine in different stores and stuff like that, so. Great for that.
It's all good.
Um, and I know that there's some funding now to try and get like a Dorothea pocket park going. At least I think the funding is, the grant is for plans for, engineering plans for that, right?
So there's two different grants. One that I just submitted last week is for engineering plans for something more permanent. But Mike McGinnis is working on something that would be a little bit more temporary for planters and things like that in the meantime. If we get the implementation, or if we get the planning grant, then we would try to go for implementation grants after that.
And it seemed like the school was excited about the idea of trying to maybe, you know, like a good chemistry on transition from their fields to that new area too. That's all, that's all I can remember. Anybody else?
Uh, was the envi- was it the environmental committee? I feel like it was right after our last meeting too, because I think they switched to Thursday.
Oh, was that the one I came to?
Yeah, that was the one that Kristen was at, gave update on the upcoming zoning changes. But they didn't have enough people for a quorum, so.
So they couldn't say yay?
Uh, yeah, no, it was like Kristen and Counselor Jess?
Yeah, Councilmember Valani and I were there, and then Commissioner Ernstman was there, and there were three members of the committee. They mostly wanted to hear about what sort of sustainable features are going in the zoning ordinance.
Comments?
I have one. The volunteer appreciation luncheon is at the community center June twelfth. Hopefully you guys got the invite. I think it's a Wednesday.
I think it's the last day of school, which made that really exciting.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Together, yeah.
Noon to two, if you can make it. You can bring a guest too, so if you wanna go.
Can I bring my tenure along?
Sure, there's tacos there. She'll probably win the bingo.
Is it in the social district?
Uh, no, the community center is not part of that. But if you didn't get the email, let me know. I can ask to have it resent to you, but last year it was kind of fun. So it's a couple hours. I mean, you don't have to stay the whole time. It's not prison. You guys do enough by volunteering, so you can leave when you want.
You can stay for the volunteer time.
It's bingo time, I said.
Any other additional comments?
The meeting, the joint meeting of council and planning commission for our final, this is the last look at the draft before we roll it out to the public, is July ninth in the evening. It'll be at Public Safety. Anything else to add for that?
You're gonna remind us of that.
Yeah, yeah, very excited.
And I, I started twice to markup things. Is it too late? Can I still markup things in the Google Drive or do it?
Yes, definitely still do it, taking comments in there. And then, the other thing, I don't know if we talked about this at the last meeting, but council approved Garden Central for a public-private parking lot? So that.
What?
So that's something, no, so, um. The parking study we did a while ago, recommended as a way to make up for the locations where we are maybe short on municipal parking, and that doesn't mean that the number of spaces overall are short. It just means they need to be located and distributed a little bit differently. That one way we could do that more economically is to partner with private properties to lease their parking for public use. So to give you an example, to construct the Cummings parking lot, we have an estimate of nine hundred thousand dollars for thirty spaces. Doesn't include the land. We were able to work out an agreement with the Garden Central property owner for his parking lot. We would forgive the city portion of the taxes, and we would do maintenance, and it's gonna be, end up being an investment, including the maintenance of less than ten thousand dollars for the whole space. So we're gonna, that, that's the first one, but the parking study did identify other areas where we could target to try to increase municipal parking by doing those leases. It's a five-year lease with one year renewals.
It's on Twelve Mile, right?
It's on Twelve Mile by like Ageless Image where Tudy and Tallulah's used to be.
Gotcha.
So that will become public parking in the near future. That's it.
Any other comments? Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Lovely to see you again.
You as well.
All right, somebody give me a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that okay? Ellen Baker?
You don't have to worry about that.
So, so with the public, with that public parking, Kristen, then that.